Good evening, and welcome to the council meeting on Monday, February 28th, 2022, here at 7:00 PM in the McKinnon Council Chambers. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on one nation, with God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Item two, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Excused.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lozo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Excused.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Very good. Agenda item number three. Consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, February 7th, 2022.
Come on.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion, amendments, changes? There being none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Subcommittee reports. General Government would be Counselor Ryan. She's not here this evening. She did have a meeting last week, and there were four agenda items for which she's involved, and they were all voted unanimously to be moved up to council. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was a DPW Subcommittee meeting held on February 24th, 2022, in the Veterans Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Steves, Citizen Member Splain. Also in attendance were DPW Director Heather Blakely, Town Council Chairman John Daniel, Town Council Vice Chairman Dave Adams, Citizens Maureen Doyle and George Shennier, and the Town Clerk Matty Benattis. There were several agenda items on tonight's meeting that were discussed and voted on. Agenda item number 18 and 19, Amendment Two to the Time Bond Agreement on the South Street Reconstruction Project to Include Construction Oversight. Agenda items number 20, 21, and 22 on Change Order Number Eight to the J. A. Lynch Contract for Main Street Improvement Project. And Agenda Item Number 23, to instruct the manager to solicit bids to inspect, remove, and replace the town hall carpets and subflooring in the hallway, Town Clerk's Office, Assessor's Office, and Town Manager's Office. Agenda Item Number 24, vote to award the contract to Ardent Group for $12,000 for the installation of sodium hydroxide bulk tanks at the water treatment plant. We also had some discussion on the pour-patching work done on Everett Street, the trees that were felled on Morris Street, snow operations in town, and the plow driver's safety from working long hours during the recent snowstorms, an update on the open trench permit and regulations in town, and a discussion on the citizens' request to remove some trees at Oak Ridge Cemetery to allow for more burial spots. At this time, there are no more meetings scheduled. Thank you.
Very good. Education and Human Services, Counselor Joel.
Thank you. We did have a meeting scheduled and then got postponed due to a scheduling conflict with another scout committee. There is one agenda item on the agenda. There was only one item that was requested at this time, which was for tonight's agenda, which is a HVAC issue at the library, so it's just a contract. It's coming directly up. The second issue was on cable request, and that was postponed at Mrs. Clements's request because she was out of state, so we'll schedule another meeting up. That's all I have right now. Thank you. No meeting scheduled.
Very good. Thank you. Planning and Development, Counselor, Vice Chair, Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a, we will have a P&amp;D meeting on 3 March at seven, I'm sorry, 5:30 in the Veterans Room this coming Thursday. Agenda item number 28. Tonight's agenda is from Plan and Development, and I'll discuss further when we get to that point. Thank you.
Very good. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lozo.
I have no report at this time, no meeting schedule. We had one last week, and what we have is probably four agenda items that we're going to be discussing tonight, and I'll give you the recommendations at that time.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Chairman's announcements. I have three short announcements this evening. First one, I am forming an ad hoc committee to review town council rules and regulations. The charge of the committee will be to review the current rules and regulations, suggest modifications or new rules and regulations if warranted, report back to the town council for the April 11th, 2022 council meeting with any recommendations, if there are any. That gives the committee, Subcommittee, seven weeks to put together what they need to put together. The members of the committee will be Counselor-at-Large Jackie Ryan. She'll serve as chairperson of the Subcommittee. Former Chairperson of the Town Council, Jack Jovan, and Counselor-at-Large Joseph Dow. I ask members of the town council to review the rules and regulations, and if you have any suggestions, to please get them to a committee member for consideration. Number two, I am scheduling a special town council meeting for Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, hopefully at 7:00 PM. The agenda will consist of two items, and Counselor should look for information tomorrow about the actual agenda items and the backup information. Third, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Town Manager Michael McCall on his recently completing requirements for a graduate-level degree. Mr. McCall has been attending the Suffolk University Sawyer Business School and has been awarded a master's degree in public administration with a concentration in state and local government. His academic efforts are noticed by his 4.0 GPA. Further, he has been given membership in the National Honor Society for Public Affairs and Administration, Pi Alpha Alpha. Mr. McCall's success to the town is certainly enhanced, service to the town is certainly enhanced by his success. He should be justified, be proud of the tremendous achievement his efforts have brought him. Nice job, and congratulations. And that's all I have. Agenda item number six, Town Managers' Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Well, first of all, thank you. I believe in lifelong learning, and I know a lot of our staff does, and we're big supporters here of tuition reimbursement. You know, many of the people that you see on a daily basis have, you know, worked on their bachelor's or their graduate degrees, and I think that makes for well-rounded staff and, you know, something that I personally wanted to do, but I also think you set an example for your staff to keep learning and keep abreast of the issues that are going on. And as I'll relate later in the evening, some of the connections that I made through that program have helped this town directly and indirectly, and all the communities that I've worked from, and that's part of the continuing education. I'm sure any of the gentlemen behind me in public safety, every time they go to a training, they build more people in their network. When they have a problem, they can reach out and call somebody who's been through something before, and it also allows you to open doors to get assistance for your community. So I wholly endorse it, and I ask all of our employees to keep, keep on learning, because, you know, we have procurement training, we have all sorts of stuff that's applicable to the day-to-day jobs, but also to pursue a degree because it can help you in the long run, open doors, as well as help you in your career. Just to keep you abreast, we are currently working on all of our collective bargaining agreements. We're in the process of doing all of that. Since we last met, DPW and I, as well as the Assessor, we've met with Sturbridge on our sewer IMA. That's coming up for renewal. I know there's been some inquiry about the cable contract, continuing with our cable council to try and make inroads with Charter. We sent them a letter basically demanding them to come back to the table. I also wanted to let you know that we are in budget season. We're actively doing our budget hearings in preparation for the presentation to the council, which will come up at the end of next month. I know that during this process, I started talking to our energy consultants. Our contracts were last negotiated about three years ago, when energy prices were a lot different. As we all know by watching the news, energy costs have been going up, so I just want to forewarn you that we may see a marked increase in our natural gas, as well as our electricity prices as we go out to bid on those later on this year. The only other item of note, we did meet again today with various department heads and other stakeholders in the community, as we do almost every two weeks, to talk about COVID. Mr. Pelletier informed us that the 14-day case count is down. They noted 97 cases out of 1,300 for a 7.4% positivity rate. He said this may or may not be affected by the fact that a lot of people are now home testing, but they're starting to see more and more days with under 10 cases in a row. As you may know, the other week, the Board of Health did issue a recommendation to both me and Dr. Villar, asking us to forego lifting the mask mandate until two weeks after school vacation in the event that there was any transmission. Dr. Villar had already forewarned parents that they were going to continue the masks. I had indicated this morning during that meeting that I will honor the same mask mandate for the next two weeks, provided, however, the Board of Health is set to meet next week. If they change their recommendation, I will lift it, but I wanted to ensure that we had some continuity between all town buildings. If you're going to go into the schools and have to wear a mask, I felt it was only fair that you go to every other town building at this time. So as soon as we get some updated information from the Board of Health, we will let you know, but for right now, we'll maintain the masks in town hall. And just to add that the folks from Harrington Hospital are seeing the same trends that we are. So it is, it is, I won't say positive trend, because that's an odd term to use with COVID, but we are seeing a good trend in the fact that the numbers are coming down, and hopefully this will just become like anything else every winter season, like an influenza at some point. Maybe we'll just get a COVID shot in the fall, like most people get a flu shot. But until the next time we have a meeting for the council, we will be wearing masks unless I notify you earlier. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. Jim.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, Presentation, an MVP Update by, I believe, Eric Ramsey.
Take it off to be dirt, I suppose. Thank you all for allowing me to come and speak this evening. So the MVP, which is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Planning Grant, was a grant that we applied for in June of 2021. We were awarded in July. Grant documents were signed August 30th of 2021, or thereabouts. After that point, we've been, myself has been reviewing the award documents, which are lengthy, and the scope of the project, and the, what's involved, and what our part is in that. That included several emails to the state, as well as phone calls, just to go over things with them to make sure that I had a firm understanding of what we were doing. So we have a fantastic regional coordinator for the MVP program. His name is Andrew Smith. He's with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So I've worked with him quite closely throughout this entire process, and, you know, his best advice to us was to review the list of engineering firms that the state has put together who are certified MVP providers. So reviewing through that list, looking at who is local, who has done what as far as MVPs, sent out several emails and phone calls to firms to get them to give us a proposal for what they would, for their process with the grant. We received two proposals back, one from Beals &amp; Thomas, the other Comprehensive Environmental. The Town Manager and I both reviewed those, and in doing so, we chose Beals &amp; Thomas because they, the scope of their project fit within the award of the grant. Comprehensive Environmental was $3,000 higher than the grant amount, so obviously we want the one who fit the scope of the grant. Since then, we've been working with Beals &amp; Thomas on gathering information for the background for the workshops that are upcoming. We began discussing with department heads and interested parties to be part of the core team, and I know we had some discussion with that here a little while ago, and Counselor Steves has agreed to be part of the core team, as well as Maureen Doyle. They are very, very welcome additions to the core team, and I value their input in the process. And so again, since then, we've held, I've had meetings with Beals &amp; Thomas regarding background research, and they called it a kickoff meeting, but it was just a kind of a meet and greet with their team to kind of go over what their process is, and they have done a number of MVP planning grants, including Chelmsford and several other towns in the area. So Beals &amp; Thomas, again, in the background, they've been conducting research, identifying stakeholders, preparing presentations for the workshops. They've been really doing quite a bit of work in the background that is just fantastic, quite frankly. February 18th, we held the initial kickoff meeting with the core team. At that meeting, we reviewed the grant, discussed the workshops, and how those work. They have two four-hour workshops. The, at this point in time, I believe we will be holding those in person rather than remotely. If something changes and we have to pivot to a remote meeting, we will be discussing that with the state. We need to get their approval prior to going with a remote meeting. In my experience with this type of, like charrette, let's call it, an in-person meeting is much more effective. You know, the way that this works is there are going to be tables of, you know, six to 10 individuals at a table, each with a member of the core team who will be their table leader, and there are several breakout sessions in which maps will be reviewed, and hazard areas and climate issues will be discussed. As part of these meetings and breakout sessions, then we'll come back together and collaborate everything, which will come back to you in June or so, for, May or June, for a final report, and then we will hold a listening session to go over the report at a future We reviewed the initial stakeholder list, and several wonderful additions were made to that list, so we've been reaching out with them. Beals &amp; Thomas has already started reaching out to those individuals on our stakeholder list. We'll continue with that with them. We've reviewed all the maps that they've gotten so far, identified additional areas and additional hazard locations, and then we discuss the next steps in the future meetings. The first Community Resiliency Building Workshop, which is that four-hour meeting, will be held sometime in the third or fourth week of March. Announcements will be going out shortly, as soon as we lock down a date and a location. And so we've been notifying that through the website, the Southbridge News, Hispano Vasero, and other such things. So that's where we're at this point in time. Any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Could you explain what MVP is?
Of course. So it's Immunicipal Vulnerability Preparedness. There are two phases. There's planning grants and action grants. The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness identifies areas of where there will be impacts due to climate change and other natural disasters. So I'm sure you all are aware, the town has had a history of flooding. You know, we've built several dams, or the US Army Corps has, that hopefully will take care of those things, but what happens if there's a, you know, 500-year flood? What's the impact to that, and how do we mitigate and those damages? That's part of what this is for. The other part is for ongoing climate change. You know, what happens if we heat up and our, or we cool down, and we have greater snowfalls, or we have more rainfall, or we have less rainfall? How do we prepare for that, and how do we plan for that moving forward? So the second phase is action grants. Once we have the planning grant in hand, we'll be eligible to apply for action grants, and those will be things where we can identify within the plan for making repairs. For example, upgrades to the storm sewer system. Flood control. All those sort of things would all be sort of eligible projects. Does that answer your question, Counselor? Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on an item not on tonight's Please identify yourself for the record.
Yep. I'll do that. Last couple times I didn't. I'm Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. And first of all, congratulations, Mr. McCall. I think that's great. Okay. My DCR calendar reminded me to remind you all that if you have five to 10 acres of undeveloped land and like to think long-term and would like a tax break, the Forest Land Taxation Act, otherwise known as Chapter 61, may be for you. There are three types. Chapter 61 is for forest land. Chapter 61A is for agriculture, and Chapter 61B is for recreation. A tax break may be great for landowners waiting for their trees to mature before a harvest, or if you're waiting for a certain certification, or if your corn maze trail fell through due to the recent pandemic. There are many plans available to suit your goals of maintaining bird or general habitat, creating climate forestry, or forest stewardship. A forester can help you to identify goals and can help write your tenure plan. If your goals change during that time, or at the end of it, a forester can help rewrite or renew it. The enrollment, oh, whoops, sorry. What land is not included? Residential, commercial, or industrial land with buildings or any type of structure, like gravel pits, mining, solar fields, or solar arrays. The enrollment process is not difficult. A forestry plan must be filed by June 30th. So that's why I'm reminding you now, so you can get it ready. When the plan is approved, a CL1 form is completed and given to the local tax assessor. And that is a link on the Mass.gov website, mass.gov website. It's all right there. All this information can be found on the mass.gov website under Chapter 61. That page has a link to DCR foresters, as well as to the UMass Extensions, Mass Woods website, that has a tool to help you figure out your potential assessment. With lots of global insecurity in terms of climate, ecology, economy, et cetera, Chapter 61 can help you do your part by helping to preserve or to create local habitat and be a part of the local ecology and economy. And also check out the WorcesterConservation.org website for lots of great trees, shrubs, fruits, and perennial vegetables, and wildflowers to help your garden and habitat on all lands, because even in a small garden, ecology happens. So once again, that's www.westerconservation.org, and on my order form, Worcester and Conservation is capitalized. I don't know if that's, if it's cap-sensitive, but I'm just telling you. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the council at this time and come to the podium? Please state your name for the record.
Well, I just want to start out by saying that I have five minutes to talk.
Yes, you do.
So if somebody has a problem with what I have to say, they wait until the end, and don't start the clock until after I give my name and address.
Very good.
Donald Solinsky, 33 Henry Street. I want to start out by apologizing to Counselor Jovan, the last time I was here, for asking him to shut up. That was very rude of me, and it was because of all the interruptions, and that won't happen again. The last meeting is the first time I heard Counselor Jovan actually address the reason why the muzzle was off my dog. He says, quote, "He states his dog was ill," end quote, strongly implying that I was lying. All of a sudden, after four months of daily walks past police and town officials, I decide to lie and simply remove the muzzle for no reason? It just doesn't make sense. Also, the ACO report states that when asked why the muzzle was off the dog, I immediately responded, "He just got sick." If the ACO was professional enough, she would have either taken a sample of the vomit, or at the very least, a photo. Counselor Jovan says, if, quote, "If the town really wanted to go after Mr. Solinsky, I'm sure they could have, but they didn't," end quote. Counselor Jovan, I believe you, at one time, you were a police chief. Were you suggesting that the police make up a phony charge to get it made? What more than taking my companion from me forever and forcing me to sign a vile agreement is going after me? I begged the town to file a criminal complaint for my day in court, but they were afraid. Again, recall what the judge said when he ruled he could not hear my case. Mr. Solinsky, I have read your file in full. I understand your dog bit someone after you had fallen. I also understand that you had not been with your dog for the past two months. He then looks directly at the ACO and the lawyer and suggests maybe the town can work something out. Following the judge's suggestion, the ACO was approached on the court steps and chose not to work anything out. Finally, the fact that this council and the town manager does not recall a vote to euthanize my dog is very disturbing, but it goes to the core of what I have been speaking about at the Citizens Forums. Your alleged facts are false. Counselor Jovan interrupted me at the last Citizens Forum and said, quote, "For the record, this council never took a vote to kill his dog." I said, "Yes, you did." Counselor Jovan said that two more times, and I still had to challenge him. Counselor Jovan then addressed the town manager, "Did this council ever take a vote to euthanize that dog?" The town manager replied, "The short answer, I don't believe so. My recollection is it was a vote to endorse the recommendation of the ACO, one of which is if she could not place the dog and had no other recourse based on, I believe, statute, that she would euthanize the dog, but she never euthanized the dog because she found placement for the dog." That is simply false. The ACO recommendation was only to bring the dog to a vet to have final services performed. A meeting where I was not allowed to talk, the council voted 6 to 3, Counselor Dow, to follow the ACO's recommendation. I repeat, her only recommendation was to euthanize my dog. As far as the ACO finding placement, again, that is false. ARC found placement, which the ACO refused to do. I had to have my attorney work out an agreement with the town for the rescue to take place, and that entailed my signing a five-page agreement that I would not sue the town or ever see my dog again. This glaring example is just one of the many facts that I've been trying to bring to light to the citizens of Southbridge. So as I said months ago, I owe it to the dog and to the citizens of Southbridge to continue to speak out on his behalf, since he is not able to speak for himself, but you have to have a dog like Vegas to know what I'm speaking about. And also, the town manager emailed my lawyer a bill for the legal fees for this town to keep my dog. It was $9,827.55. That money could have been used for the school committee. I believe the schools are in receivership. That money could have been used there, taxpayer money. The taxpayer money can, been used by the fire department to get safety equipment, and it sure as hell could have been used by the police department for whatever. But once again, I just want to say that you voted to euthanize my dog. You voted to go by the ACO's recommendation, and if you want to look at the video of the town meeting, it's on YouTube.
Mr. Solinsky, your time is expiring.
Thank you. I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to approach, any other citizens that would like to approach the council at this time? There being none, we'll move on, please. Agenda item- Agenda item number nine. Vote to accept the proposal to provide electrical services for the installation of a new electrical panel and circuits in the maintenance airport hangar from Garin Electrical Service Incorporated for $24,000 and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Very good. That comes under Counselor Ryan's committee. That was a unanimous vote to move up to council. Mr. Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is repairs to what used to be the maintenance hangar. We had outside maintenance firm that worked on planes, worked out of this hangar. It just was out of date. It was 1950s wiring and it didn't meet code. So we stripped all the wires out of the building and we put it out to bid according to the town. And this, once this wiring program is done, we have power in this hangar, we have a new company that's going to move in. So it's going to bring a new business to town. They'll be based out of the hangar, New England Airplane Refinishing. Well, yeah, Refinishing and they'll have, I think they have three employees at this time. So it's going to add employees in the town. So I think it's a great benefit. We've been working on this hangar for a number of years through donations and other small amounts of money. We have put new doors on. So this will finish the project soon as this is done. They'll be looking to move in in April into the building.
Very good. Councillors. Counselor Mike Hady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did ask some questions about this at the Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting. And the only thing that I was questioning is where the funding was coming from. So from what I understand, this was a capital item from years ago because I couldn't find it anywhere on our capital budgeted items. And so apparently it must have fallen off the list or something, which I've, you know, I think the committee discussed this. We don't like, we don't feel that things should fall off the list like that. So that could be the case that it fell off the list, but I still don't know where the funding is going to come from. I did get a list from Karen. Capital projects funds balances. I saw something from 2018. Repair of airport hangar, but that's all I could find, so. I don't have any problems supporting this. I'm just curious where the money is going to come from. That's all.
There is, the capital, capital improvement funds, there was $27,115 left in those, in that account for the airport. So that's where we were looking to get the funds from. And this is 24,000, so there's still.
Okay. And that is on, I'm sorry, through you. That is on the list. It's, it says repair of airport hangar. So that's what it is? All right. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
For the clarification, was it PND or GenGov?
Oh, you're right. Okay.
Okay.
GenGov.
Brain start thinking again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? And one abstention. Counsel Lazo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10. Vote to approve a transfer for $71,000 to town manager salaries and wages. $31,000 from treasurer collector salaries and wages and $40,000 from economic development salaries and wages to fund the town manager's reorganization plan voted August 23rd, 2021 and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
This came from Counselor Ryan's committee. It was voted unanimously to come up to council. Any discussion? Counselor Steves.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was unable to attend that meeting. So could you just quickly summarize what this is actually going to do, Mr. McCall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Counselor Steves. First of all, the way it read, it makes it sound like I'm getting $71,000, which is not the case. As you recall, we came last summer to talk about a reorg plan where we had some open positions and we felt it would be best used if we took those positions. We had some people that were performing split functions, some people doing payroll, some people doing HR, some people doing administration. And rather than fill one of the positions in economic development, we moved a lot of things around. And so this is just moving the appropriate remaining salary balances from those other positions that were not filled. The economic development position, part of it was used for the current staff. Part of that salary was funded, I believe, through CDBG. So the $40,000 there was from the former Economic Development Director's salary that came up. And there was a clerical position in the treasurer collector's office that did payroll, which is now our assistant in our HR offices doing payroll. So the salaries just were realigned with the positions as we retitled them.
Awesome. Very good. Any other councillors? Counselor Mike Hady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did ask for a update on what the salaries are for these positions. I believe Ms. Haronoyes was going to provide me with one.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I do know that request came in. I know Ms. Haronoyes and I discussed it. I think it may have gone to our HR department and I'm not sure why it didn't get to us this evening. I will try and respond. I know we've had a couple of things come up in the last couple of days. I will make sure that that gets out to the council by email. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven, six, one. Motion passes. Item number 11. Vote to approve a transfer for $714.13 to workers' compensation insurance town from workers' compensation insurance school to pay workers' compensation insurance audit adjustment invoice and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Second.
That was also voted unanimously to come up to council from Counselor Ryan's Subcommittee. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 12. Vote to accept donations totaling $3,590 to the Town of Southbridge Holiday Visions Program. The amounts were donated from Hyde Dexter Russell Charitable Foundation, $2,000. Southbridge Business Partnership, $1,000. Sturbridge Coffee Roasters, $90. And David Adams, $500.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. That came up from Counselor Ryan's committee as well, and that was unanimously recommended to come forward. Any discussion? Counselor Jovan.
I'll defer to Counselor Adams so he can speak further. Just want to add my wife in there.
I'm sorry. Mr. and Mrs. David Adams.
My wife.
Okay.
Writes the checks.
Your wife controls the press.
Absolutely. Not afraid to admit that there, Scott. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Jovan.
I just publicly want to thank all the individuals that contributed to this because it is a highlight of the year, especially with the last two years that we've endured. And I know this past Christmas or holiday season, that event was very well attended by a lot of individuals. It's just a great thing for our community and thank you all for what they do on that. Thank you.
I'll echo those comments. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 13. Vote to confirm Deputy Chief Joe Yulik's recommendation to appoint Patrick J. Normandin of Sturbridge, Mass. as a permanent full-time firefighter effective immediately pending the successful completion of physical abilities testing, PAT, background check, and psychologic testing.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
Recommendation from PPP was unanimous for this to confirm.
Very good. Deputy Chief Yulik.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilors, Mr. Manager, and members of the community. It gives me great pleasure to come to you. Filling an open position within the fire department. Due to an early retirement in late December, a position became available. We posted that position. It closed in early January. We received about 30 applicants, went through our normal process of reviewing applications, having peer interviews with members of our department and command staff. We also had skills evaluations and a final interview with myself, the town manager, and the Human Resources Department. Unique to this position, I was informed that the, one of the applicants was an immediate family member of the fire chief. I advised the fire chief that he would not be a part of the process and the town manager was also notified of that fact as well. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Captain Matthew, Lieutenant Wilson, Acting Lieutenant Gary Peck, Jeff Clark, Ryan Morton, and Tim Pluff for participating in the process. There was about 10 people that were in the process altogether. So through the process, Patrick Normandin identified himself as a clear candidate to fill this position with us. He is a member of the call department just from a few weeks ago. Lives in the Town of Sturbridge and just about two miles from the fire station. He is a paramedic with eight years of experience. He holds firefighter 1, 2 through the call vault program. He is a certified instructor and holds officer 1, 2, and 3 certifications in the pro board. He's coming to us with six years of career experience from the Town of Sturbridge and we look to welcome him to the department. This is pending a psychological screening, which did already happen. I do not have the results. The police department background check, which takes quite a bit of time. It is a pretty scary packet to receive. And the physical agilities test.
Very good. Councillors. Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Certainly support this recommendation by the fire department and thank them. We had a conversation at PPP about the process. It was well-run by the deputy chief. And I think in public safety these days, it's very hard to find candidates to go anywhere. There are a tremendous amount of towns that are looking for firefighters and police officers. And I just think it's great that we have an individual of this experience to come over to the town that wants to come here, knowing how busy it is, especially with our EMS program. So to find an individual that is qualified and a paramedic and ready to start right away, I think is kudos to the town and a welcome addition to our department. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
I too would like to reflect the thank you for the professionalism and the integrity of the process through Deputy Chief Yulik, town manager, and the Human Resources, the gentleman that did the screening with you. I thought that this was one of the better processes in moving forward. This gentleman here, Patrick Normandin. I had a situation in Sturbridge. I encountered him. He's professional. Saw him, you know, arrive to the scene. I have nothing but good things to say, but the most impressive thing about this gentleman is his resume. I have seen resumes before in certifications and qualifications. This is what I call somebody we want in Southbridge. And what's more important, he wants to be here. And I think that this is going to be a good thing for the Town of Southbridge, especially for the Southbridge Fire Department. I will be supporting this tonight.
Anyone else? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Are we going to appoint more Coleman?
Yes, we have an open application process for the call department. We have three, once, if this is confirmed, we'll have three open positions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Congratulations, Mr. Norman.
Thank you very much. Just want to say thank you to councillors this evening for supporting my appointment. I know we're not shaking hands still due to COVID, or else I would go around and individually shake your hands. I enjoy, you know, working, I've worked a few incidents here in the Town of Sturbridge over my last six years with Sturbridge. I've always been impressed by the professionalism of the people within the Town of Sturbridge. More importantly, the fire department and police department. Look forward to taking my career here and my experience and using it for those citizens in Southbridge here. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Agenda item number 14. Vote to approve the police department request for a transfer from account number to account number 011-210.585-300 electrical, lighting, communications in the amount of $4,500 to cover the cost to purchase and install a new server for the phone and voicemail system at police headquarters and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
Subcommittee was to confirm.
Very good. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Mr. Town Manager. This is essentially our server failed or is failing at the police department. It keeps ringing when you call our business line, the 5420 line. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I've gotten several calls, including from department heads. Ms. Blake, she was one of them. Also, the town manager's office, when they call the 5420 line, no one's answering. We don't know why this is happening. Well, we know why now. Our server's malfunctioned. We didn't know why it was happening. So right now, being short two police officers, we've got money in our salary account. This wasn't requested as a capital item. It's relatively inexpensive fix. It's a refurbished modem or server. I'm being told by our IT people that this will work, this will do the job, this will correct the problem. So it's a serious issue when the system's not working. If you have an emergency and the business line's not, to members of the public, please call 911. But until we can get this fixed, and I'm hoping by, you know, the end of the week, this is back up and running.
Very good. Councillors. Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 15. Vote to approve the police department request for a transfer from account number 001-210.511-000 salary to account number 001-210.548-000 motor vehicle parts and accessories in the amount of $10,000 to cover the cost to purchase Lund Loft weapon mounts that are now required to be in compliance with the new mandates for the annual audit and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
The recommendation at Subcommittee was unanimous. Move forward.
Chief.
Again, through you, Mr. Chair. This one's a little bit unique. On February 14th, I was notified by the law enforcement support office, the former 1033 program, that all of our rifles need to be secured in a certain fashion now with police reform and some other issues. I was not made aware of that till mid-February, so I could not have asked for this purchase before, but they have notified me. They're coming in April. And we need to have these correctly mounted or they will take back possession of these rifles that we originally got about, say, 10 years ago from the military. Patrol rifles that we use every single day working. So for the safety of the officers, for the safety of the people that live here, I think it's essential that we get this done as soon as possible before the audit.
Very good. Councillors. Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 16. Vote to accept the MACCS e-citation grant in the amount of $15,316 for the purchase of a printer, six rolls of citation paper, installation costs, and applicable training on the MACCS e-citation application and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
Vote at Subcommittee was unanimous, Tabas.
Chief.
Again, Mr. Chair, this is essentially electronic ticketing. It's faster, more efficient way for our officers to generate reports, write citations. They write from their patrol vehicles. You can scan the operator's licenses now on our mobile data terminals. All the information goes right to these e-citations. Prints on the spot, give it to the operator. Everything else is digital. The state, a lot of departments in the state have been using this technology since around 2014, but it's relatively expensive. So we waited until a grant came along and here it is and we're going to jump on it. The only recurring cost is we have to buy printer paper, which is relatively cheap. But all the equipment and the hardware and everything for the cruises included in the price of this, in the cost of this grant.
Very good. Councillors. Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 17. Vote to accept the MED Project LLC grant in the amount of $1,300 for the purpose of supporting law enforcement agencies in the collection and disposal of unwanted medicine and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
At Subcommittee, the vote was unanimous, Tabas.
Chief.
This one, Mr. Chair, we've been before this council, several of these councils anyway, back in 2020, back in 2021. This is just a replenishment of this grant for 2022. People in the community have medications that they want to get rid of. They can drop them in a kiosk in our lobby. It's secured, it's monitored on video 24/7, and we destroy this several times. It's secured, it's monitored on video 24/7 and we destroy this several times a year. This covers the cost for destruction.
Very good. Counselors? Counselor Dow.
After that, I have something after that.
Very good. Anyone else? Counselor Steve.
Are there any kinds of medications that you will not accept?
I'm sorry, Counsel, can you repeat that?
Are there any kinds of medications that you do not accept?
We take everything, no questions asked. You just walk right into our lobby. It's anonymous, drop it in there in a bag. We don't take, some people believe it or not have put hypodermic needles in there. We do not want that. We want medications.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Dow.
No, you're going to vote.
Oh, yeah. There being no further discussion. All those in favor?
There you go.
Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Motion passes.
I want to say something to the chief if I can.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Chief, I was impressed for one of your crews at Park on West Street have the light on for the first time. That was very generous from the officer.
Oh, thank you.
It looked very, very professional and I like that. Hopefully they continue when the parks places on the main road or stuff to have the little light on to people see it and actually behave more. Thank you.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams.
Making motion to move agenda item number 28 over to 18. I guess it's a pretty quick brief and a vote for this evening. It's the only thing that's on the item for tonight.
Very well. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'll upstand.
You're upstanding?
I'll be in favor.
You'll be in favor? All right. Six to one. Motion passes.
Six zero one.
Six zero one. Okay. Motion 28. Vote to refer the amendment to Southbridge zoning map back.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 27, I'm sorry, to number 27.
27?
My apologies.
Okay. Do I need to vote again?
I would say so.
Do I need to vote? We're okay?
Change it to you.
All right.
We're moving an agenda item.
Agenda item number 27 is being moved up. Vote to approve the Economic Development Administration's EDA, American Rescue Plan Administration's ARPA, travel tourism and outdoor recreation grant application to design and construct a rail trail approved January 24th, 2022 and February 7th, 2022, not to exceed $1.7 million and allow the town manager to sign required paperwork related to the application.
So move.
Second. Very good.
All right. So through you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, tonight we're here once again to talk to you about the EDA grant application for the Quinne Bog Valley Rail Trail project. I know Counsel Marquetti had asked me for some information. I had sent you an email within the last two weeks giving you a brief update. This has been a roller coaster ride for us to try and get this to this state. Ms. Dean is here. I'm hoping I'm not stealing too much of her thunder, but she deserves an awful lot of credit for us being up here this evening. I couldn't give Mr. Marquetti some of the information that he had asked for the update this evening because I did not have it. And I can tell you probably, well, not probably, since I sent that email on the 18th, when we were given an extension of time for this application, we have probably talked every day and there's a list of people that we've talked to in order to try and get this project done the way we want within the confines of the town's finances and whatever we can get from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as well as the federal government. We all believe on staff and our consultants at BSC that this is key to the economic revitalization of the community here in Southbridge. Just given the location of the rail trail, all the neighborhoods it touches and what we think can come out of a project like this. So I know there's been several counselors that have talked to me all along, they've been committed to this. It's near and dear to their heart and I know counsel has endorsed this before. So this is just a very quick slide and to the point that I made about Counsel Marquetti, I could not tell you everything because I did not have answers till about two hours ago. So at 5:30, I received this and I'm very pleased and I, on behalf of Ms. Dean and BSC, that is a letter of commitment from the Secretary of Mass Department of Transportation for $1.1 million to the town of Southbridge. So we worked around the clock essentially on telephone calls. I'll give you the list of people and I'll tell you in a few minutes, but when I blow this up, they agreed. We made a sales pitch to them. We had an emergency meeting with the Secretary of Transportation's office. On Thursday afternoon, we probably spent 45 minutes with them and we provided through BSC and Ms. Dean and follow-up calls, all the information that we could supply to them in order to get additional funding initially to reimburse the town for its contribution when we were using some of the ARPA money. But after Mass DOT heard what we were trying to do and they wanted to see it built out to their specs, they came back and said, let's see if we can help you. So they're asking to piggyback our $400,000 to make a $1.5 million local match to the EDA application. And so what that means, we originally came to you with a $5.6 million project and then the EDA said we were going to need, you know, we could do that for 100%, but the ask was too big in that we didn't have a local match. They said a minimum of 20% of that project, up to 30%, a minimum of 20% up to a maximum of 30%. So we came back to you again, asking to cut down the size of that project so we would have a smaller EDA request. Then they came back to us and said, we've reviewed your application again. We're going to knock out some of your in-kind contributions, some of the work from our DPW. They weren't too crazy about some of the other projects that we were doing on West Street and our TIP project at Hook Street. So now that the dust has settled, instead of a $5.6 million project that we originally pitched to you folks trying to get the 100% match, with DOT, Mass DOT's assistance, we'll be looking at a project that has a total project cost of $5.1 million. We're not looking to take out anything from the last time we were here to meet with you folks. Mass DOT is still considering our in-kind contributions, so they want to see the 5.1. But as far as the EDA is concerned, we're going to be proposing to them a 4.3, almost $4.4 million project. The state is going to give us, and they've committed to $1.1 million to help us out. Our $400,000 that we had talked about previously from ARPA, that gives us a combined total match of $1.5 million, which is 34% of the total project that we're asking for. So right after we got the verbal commitment, we had a call with our representative with the EDA and explained to them, we, again, sat with this woman, Deb Bevins, it was Jeanette Tozer from BSC, Ms. Dean and I, and we explained that we think now we have an extremely attractive application. Not only do we address their concerns about the impact of COVID on this town with regard to our local receipts, our citizenry, the lack of recreation availability, we think that this project would have addressed all that. It would have helped us through the pandemic and helped us coming out. But instead of having a 20 or 30% match with the assistance of the state, we have exceeded that. So now when we submit this and we're supposed to submit it tomorrow, we'll have the updated information they want and we're coming in with more money than they asked through the backing of the state. So we're still within their guidelines of a 1.5 to $3 million ask, so we're at just under $2.9 million. So we played this all out to them this afternoon and we received very positive feedback that we now have a very good application that stands a very good chance in the running. You know, we still have this one more hurdle, but for us to go from about less than two weeks ago, we weren't sure where we were going to go because one of our initial calls with the state said they couldn't help us out. But this list here, which may be hard for folks to see, these are all the people that were involved in getting us to this $1.1 million from the staff on the town side, you know, it was primarily Ms. Dean and I. But this is almost a reverse order. This started when we had the ribbon cutting with the Massachusetts Municipal Police Training Center. We each had a chance to speak with the lieutenant governor and then we wound up speaking with our aide Sarah Rook, who then got us involved with the scheduler, Christian Nikashian. He oddly enough set me up to have a conversation with Brendan Sweeney, who's from the Office of Administration of Finance. He's also in the MPA program at Suffolk University and I knew him. So this, this is how I said before, connections and networks help. And although A&amp;F couldn't help us, Mr. Sweeney is friends with Ms. Bellevue, who's in the governor's office, who also talked to Mr. Kivior, who's chief of staff at Mass DOT. So our repeated calls and attempts to get traction with all of these aides to these various people, the lieutenant governor, the administration of finance, as well as Mass DOT, finally got the attention of Secretary Tesler, who asked his chief of staff to have the meetings with us last week. They called me last Wednesday night. We scheduled the meeting on Friday and then BSC and Ms. Dean have been working extensively on repackaging this. And then we've had these follow-up calls with Deb Bevan at the bottom, who's with the Department of Commerce, the EDA representative who goes over our application. So it took all those people, us soliciting all those people for assistance and repeated efforts to get this letter of commitment today, which, you know, I think is a huge win for Southbridge to get the town, that type of money from the Commonwealth. So we don't get the money until we get the EDA grant, but that is going to help put our application over the edge. So speaking with Ms. Dean, the folks from the state and the EDA, what we're asking you to do this evening is essentially recommit to the EDA application with the following wording. And I can read it aloud and you can do what you so choose afterwards, but I would be asking the town council to approve the town applying for an Economic Development Administration ARPA travel tourism and outdoor recreation grant for up to $4.4 million for the design and construction of the Quinne Bog Valley Rail Trail from Dudley to Sturbridge, whose full value for the buildout is $5.1 million, less the value of the in-kind labor from the Department of Public Works and the value of contributions from other funding sources and improve, including a local match of $1.5 million, which is comprised of $400,000 previously approved by the town council on February 7th, 2022, and $1.1 million committed by the Mass Department of Transportation to the town of Southbridge as of February 28, 22 for a request from the Economic Development Administration of not to exceed $2.9 million.
I'd like to entertain that as a motion to amend.
Second.
Agenda item 27 to substitute the motion that the town manager has just put forward.
Very good. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
And I, now, I should really bring up Ms. Dean because she was intimately involved in all of this and if there are any questions or other discussion needed over and above what I provided you, I'm sure she would be happy to answer all of those. And again, I thank everybody who was on that list for getting us this additional $1.1 million.
Counselor Adams.
So I just want to thank Peg again for all the hard work earned, the town team has done as far as getting this from where it was at the very beginning to, I think this is change three, but it's a good change. It got better each time, I believe. And again, it just, it shows the ability of our staff and the town to do its job above and beyond the basic requirements that they're hired for. Thank you.
I guess I would like to add, and Ms. Dean could probably tell you this, the reason why the total buildout is because Mass DOT wants it built out to some of their specifications. In order to get the number down the other week to a number where our $400,000 commitment was going to satisfy EDA, we had to eliminate the pavement. We were going to use stone dust only. What the change in price really represents is Mass DOT wants it built out to their specs. So the primary component there is going to be reintroducing a paved surface along the five mile bike trail.
Counsel Loza. There are a lot of issues that come in front of council. This is one that the council came together, we moved away from the trail, we moved towards the trail. The thing that I have a tremendous amount of respect for is no question that Team Southbridge has the knowledge and the way with all to deal with this. What impresses me on this one is the determination. You can never measure determination until the game's over and I think we're halfway and I still think there's a leg to the race, but we have to continue to believe and I commend the town manager, the economic development and all the players that were listed up there and planning development for a great job and to keep up that determination and never quit until, you know, you know, it's impossible, which in Southbridge, nothing's impossible. Thank you.
Counsel Jobin.
Yeah, through you, just want to again thank town manager and Ms. Dean especially for all the hard work put into this and DPW director because it has been a team approach to get it to this point. To be honest with you, I wasn't able to attend planning development when this stuff has come forward. And quite honestly, when I saw the agenda item this evening, I was prepared to probably say, hey, timeout, we have to reflect, but I'd like to really, again, reiterate the hard work that goes into all the projects that we have ongoing and the ability to multitask and come up with a solution for a very strong competitive application. With that too, as I'd really like to see at some point, because we've approved, applied for and approved multiple grants just within this fiscal year and probably last year. I really like to see the office come up with a list of all the grants and total dollars that have come out of this office because it truly has been, from shared streets and traffic safety grants and equipment grants from rural, a lot of money has come to the town of Southbridge that we have had the vision also to match some of this stuff to best utilize the taxpayers' dollars to make it a better town. So I really like to thank you for that, but I would welcome that kind of report at some point. I know you're very busy getting these things in, but at some point during budget season to really get a sense for the public to understand really how much, how many dollars have come to the town of Southbridge through that office, DPW, the grants, the TIP grants, airport grants, $6 million. There's a lot of money that as a town, we have gone after and brought back to the town to better it. So thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Manager.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Blakely. She's spent a lot of time and effort working with Ms. Dean on this. I just put these slides together in the last half hour before the meeting started because that's when we got the letter and everything else and I was probably too excited thinking about all the people I'd been on the phone with this last week and Ms. Blakely was out of town, but she did manage to call in for several calls, I will say, and she's been instrumental in getting us a lot of the information that was necessary. And to that end, I'm sure there are other staff members, her staff, as well as people helping us here at town hall. It is truly a team effort as Counsel Loza was talking about. I just wanted to come up here and be able to thank all the people that work with me every day and helping to make this, as you say, this determined effort to get this because I truly believe, as I said when I interviewed, that I think this could be something truly great for the town. I think it could bring a lot to the town. As we said, you know, people come where other people congregate and we've had a lot of momentum in this last 18 months. I'd like to see it keep going. I'd like to see a project like this developed and I'd like to see people come in and use the liquor licenses that we're working on and fill the storefronts downtown. And I think it's a reality and I think we're getting there and this is evidence of it. We still have a long way to go. We have to submit that application and hope we're one of the select few that get it. When we first talked to Ms. Bevan, she indicated that there weren't an awful lot of applications from the Northeast, so hopefully coming back with this, with the enhanced local match and answering their questions really puts us in a good position to get that. And I'd like to be here in not too long, coming up with Ms. Dean telling you that we have that grant. So let's look forward to that presentation.
That's right.
And I thank you.
Why not Southbridge? We have motion on the floor to amend the current agenda item with a substitution of the motion suggested by the town manager. I'm sorry, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this will be the third time we voted on this. I don't remember.
I don't remember us ever rescinding any of the other votes, just a third vote, changing how we're going to fund it. Nothing said about the other votes that we took in the past, just keeps changing. Now we're on the third one. I'm not going to change my mind on this. I realize that the rail trail is something that people want, they think it'd be a good thing for the town. I'm not convinced it's the key to economic development in this town. I think, in my own opinion, the key to economic development in this town is fixing the schools. That's where the problem is right now. We spending $4 million to send people because they want to go out of town. So we need to fix our schools. That'll be bringing people to Southbridge. This is a nice thing to have. I think that you're going to find out when you start working on that trail, you're going to find some areas of the trail that have been contaminated over the years, and I don't think Mass DEP is just going to let us pave over it and forget about it. So I, I acknowledge your hard work on this, but I don't think we're looking at the, the things that we really have to do in this town. We have a lot of things coming up. We have to deal with curbside, we have to deal with more road, we have to, we're going to have to deal with the fire station. So to put all of our time and energy into this, I just think it's the wrong direction. That's a good amount of money there, but I don't think it's going to be enough, especially when you start a 99-year lease, there are going to be a lot of problems with that trail. A lot of, a lot of departments are going to have to be working on it for 99 years. We're going to have, just the hazardous material cleanup alone is going to probably cost more than that. Thank you.
Very good, Counsel Dow and Counsel Lazo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just want to say a congratulation to the town of Southbridge and the people. That's a great move. Thank you, Mr. McCall, the, all the people work on that project. It's been going on for years and years, and a lot of past councils, they didn't want no improvement in town. Everything is no, 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 no. I live in town almost 23 years. Finally, last five years, the town moving forward. We still have issue, because the people still electing their own counselor to be on a board right here making decision for the town and for them. The money we're getting from the state, that's gift from the federal. If we don't get it, somebody else will get it. Why not Southbridge? Why we're going to let those money go to different town? I understand some council are concerned, some money will be put in different places, but that grant specific for the trail, you can apply whatever you like for different things. You can't take that grant and put it in a, in the school system or somewhere else. That, that special for the trail. And I hope there, we, most of council now they're good, but still some of them stuck somewhere, wouldn't want to spend money on certain thing, and this is wrong. We're never going to move forward. And I hope this time, the people in Southbridge will elect the right candidate to make sure Southbridge is better for all of us. And I want to thank Counsel Cotrona, he's not here tonight, for keep pushing on the trail. And finally, we got it going and hopefully be successful for another project. Thank you, Mr. Dean, thank you, Town Manager. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
The multifaceted issue that we're dealing with when you talk about economic development, I remember they told us we'd never build a school in Southbridge, and the money wasn't there, and, and, but I can tell you, a guy like Joe Van Lazo and a few others didn't quit on the town of Southbridge. We kept going, and then finally there was a tax situation where they put a dollar on the gas tax, they put it towards school buildings. It evolved while we were walking down the road wanting to build a middle high school. And what happened? It all came together of a perfect storm. We didn't raise taxes, $65 million high school, and we were heading in the right direction. God forbid the state has taken us down the dark hole, but it's another game to play, and we'll play their game for now. I'm not going to disagree with Mike Marketti, the Counselor. Being frugal and, and, and voting no on something doesn't mean you're not for anything, it just, he doesn't want to waste the dough. I get it. In a project like this, it's, it's, and I always come up with sports analogies, because when you talk about fighters and competitors, you talk about soldiers and athletes, they don't quit until the mission is accomplished. It's got to be a W at the end of the game or a W at the end of the war. And in my world, in business, what we do is, we're in halftime, okay, in this rail trail. Somebody started it, and we're going to finish it. And we're going to evolve. Yeah, there are three or four votes, five votes. If we have five more votes, it wouldn't bother me, because the bottom line comes down to is, the state and federal government, it's the way it is. Grants, it's in, it's out, we're in, we're out. We continue on the road, and we're at halftime, and we got to keep playing this game for this trail. This trail, and I think what the Manager was saying earlier is, we become a destination with this. Here's where our economic development comes in. We are a destination because we kept the registry, and it costed us some money and some grant money to fix the air circulation, but we kept the registry. Now the parking lot is full of people making appointments to come to Southbridge for a reason. The rail trail will do the same thing. At first, I wasn't the biggest proponent, but I am a proponent of it now, and I do believe that if it becomes a destination, I know what the railhead, what we call the railhead, 12 Crane Street is planning big renovations. I mean, big renovations on the back of that building, basing off the rail might come true. Everything along the rail becomes of value. We need to continue, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm not disagreeing with what he said about the schools. It is one of the most important things in a community, and that is our crippling moment, is our schools. But this is a multifaceted council. We need to deal with the schools. We don't quit, put one project against the other project. We can do both. We need to take our schools back, and we need to build a trail. We have an economic development group, and, and the head of economic development, I can't say it anymore, how strong she is and how determined she is when she delves into something. The, the previous one showed me what an economic development person wasn't, and this girl has showed me what a grant right economic development person is. Along with that, you take our DPW Director, you take our Town Manager, you take, it's a whole team of people. When this council said, let's move on the rail, the council said move on the rail, what did, what did the team do? They moved on the rail, and their determination got that extra money to get us to the next quarter, to stay in the game. Our schools, I'm with you. My friend, we need big changes, we need the state out of our pockets. We spend more money now on less students and staff than we've ever done in the history of Southbridge, and we need to do something with that. And I think Mr. Joe Van and a lot of the people who are working on things with the Commissioner, we have to, we're fighting a multifaceted battle here on a lot of different fronts to make Southbridge a better place to be. And I think we're heading in the right direction, and I think, as the Chairman says, why not Southbridge? They said we weren't going to build that middle high school, we did, and now they say we're not going to build a trail? We're going to do that too. And we will straighten out our schools. That one's the biggest task in front of us. Thank you.
Counsel Dovin.
I think Town Manager wanted, wanted to say something, and then I'll defer to him.
Very good, Mr. Manager.
I did want to acknowledge that, I, I agree with Counsel Marketti. Schools are a big reason why people move in, but it's one piece of the puzzle. It's a big piece, but I think this can be a big piece too. And I think that, you know, again, you'll have an opportunity, should we be fortunate to get the grant, you'll have the opportunity to discuss that and accept that and have a vote then. I just look at the fact that we are going to do some of the projects that Mass DOT wants, the tip project, we're going to be working on West Street, but by committing $400,000 of our ARPA funds, we could conceivably get an additional $4 million back between the federal government and the state government to make something that a lot of people want to see a reality come to Southbridge. So that's my rationale, and I did see this happen in my own hometown, and I did see a lot of businesses pop up, and I want to say, Ms. Dean, again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you already know of a business that wants to, to come to Southbridge if we have the rail trail, they've already told you, down around Hook Street. And she's nodding her head. So people are already taking notice, you know, they, they hear the discussions here. So, you know, we, we put our time and effort in because we think it's a worthwhile endeavor, and again, we would appreciate your support moving forward with the application.
Very good, Counsel Dovin.
Thank you, through you. First off, I'm not going to disagree with Counsel Marketti's position on some of the issues that face the town of Southbridge. Certainly, curbside collection is, is a concern, our council, we, from the day that we had to negotiate the issue with Cassell, when I, my very first day on council, we had to tackle that. But what did we do? We came up and said, let's form ad hoc committee to study this and make sure that we have a viable solution that we can put to the town. May not be the best solution. However, if there's a grant out there that's going to submit to the town of Southbridge and give us millions of dollars to help us with curbside collection, then I think we would go for that. If the grants were there to help the schools, and I'm not sure what we're talking about with schools. Chapter 70 money this year from the proposal of, of the Governor's Office is almost a $2 million increase to the school system. $2 million. I welcome the school district to come in here and tell us what they're going to spend $2 million extra, because my friend, serving on school committee, money isn't the answer to the issues that go on with the schools. There are capital issues that we can talk about, things that we have to address, and if we can get grant money through MSBA, we have to tackle all these things. We have to look globally in the town of Southbridge. There are a lot of issues. And then as we, it's one bite, bite at the apple, and this is another bite at the apple. Not going to disagree that procedurally, maybe we have to change how we're going to vote this, this evening, because procedurally, he may be correct. We've already voted it, we already took action on it, and this is just another vote for something that was previously voted. So if it takes that, I'm not the parliamentarian, but I would vote, I sat on the prevailing side at the last meeting, we voted at the last meeting, I would vote to reconsider the action that we took last meeting. If that's the procedural correct way to do it. I'm not sure, I would have to defer, Counsel Lazo is more of a parliamentarian than I am. If that's the action that we have to take is vote to reconsider our vote of the meeting of
February 7th.
February 7th, in which we approved it, and then to amend that vote. Is that, is that, would be that correct? I want to make it as clean as possible to make sure that we do this right. I fully support this, let's do it procedurally correct. I would defer to Counsel Lazo because I did ask.
Yeah, no, I'm, 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 I agree with Counsel Marketti. There are different votes here, but the thing is, this vote, I, I gotta say, I am going to vote for this here tonight. I'm not going to amend, I'm not going to move. I'm not going to shake. I'm going to vote this, I would vote this tonight to show the state that we're serious, to show the feds, we're in the game, and then after, go back and let's sift through what we did, and then we can, we can, if there's any tweaking, we can tweak it at the next meeting. Don't stop the train of success.
We need to be careful because part of the motion, the substitute motion refers to
The previous action.
Previous action. So we need to be careful what we do.
But, but I think, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
But I think what the intent is in the previous action is to move forward, and that's why the priority is to move forward with it. And that's why, to me, politically and parliamentary, it is, it is tweaking it, but our $400,000 we already voted on.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you, does our vote have to be part of the packet? Because if our vote doesn't have to be, well, our vote, we already committed, we've already committed that our funds are 400,000. We're not changing our, our funds.
We're adding.
Right? So our original vote was just to use ARPA funds towards a match, not to exceed 400,000. So my, my case is that we, we, if we have to re, we're not voting to change any dollar amounts that we're committing for town funds. We've already voted, we've already passed it. It's just that the town has now found additional things to beef up that application. So procedurally, I agree with you, Counsel Lazo. I, I don't want to muddy the waters. I want to fully say that we support the application for this grant and, and that dollar amount, and however they have to put the package together that says how we have the grant. So I'll defer to that application packet.
Just, just a quick question on the motion. The way it was stated could be that we are amending what we did by adding the 1.1. I think this is correct in the way it's written.
Right.
To amend our previous, I don't think we're changing what we did.
No.
We're just adding to it.
Yeah, I would agree with Counsel Lazo. You're not rescinding your prior action, you are adding to, and so I tried to make this as comprehensive as possible. I would just ask that you do make a vote of approval this evening. They asked, we, in our conversation with the EDA rep, they asked, we made them aware, we were meeting with Town Council this evening to address the agenda item, to accept all of the funds. They are going to be waiting for the minutes, whether they're forthcoming tomorrow, she said if they can't be tomorrow, as soon as they're ready, she expects them.
Thank you. I will stand by my motion, as I stated, and, and submit it to the state, because we're just, we're not changing any dollar amount that we originally appropriated, that we have talked about. It's just to make sure that the application is correct.
Any further discussion? Okay, so if I'm correct, we have two votes we need to take now. One is on the amendment, to bring the amendment forward and replace it with the current motion that's on the floor.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would, instead of, I would withdraw that I, the, the word substitute motion, and would simply say to add to the original motion, to add this language to the original motion.
Which is an amendment.
Which is an amendment. To amend this original, but I said a substitute motion, I would, I don't want it to be a substitute motion. I would say to add this language to that original motion.
Very good.
And they can add it all in, it just tracks what we've done over the last two meetings. Would that be okay? I mean, it's, it's a vote. It's got to be a lengthy motion, but, do you agree?
I agree, keep that language as an amendment.
Okay. Very good. It's ever and clear. Very good, voting on the amendment.
Could have a roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, a roll call.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Joe Van.
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marketti.
No.
And Counsel Steve.
Yes.
By 6-1, it passes, so it's brought to the floor now. We're going to vote on the amendment now as the main motion.
Main motion as amended.
Main motion as amended.
Yep.
Very good. Can we roll call?
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Joe Van.
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marketti.
No.
Counsel Steve.
Yes.
And Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 1.
Make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
Reconsider what specifically?
The only reason I want to reconsider is that we have a not to exceed 1.7 million dollars, and I don't want that to conflict with anything that we just did.
Right.
So I have a motion to reconsider. All in favor of reconsideration?
All in favor of reconsidering. Those against? Motion passes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to muddy the waters, I just saw not to exceed. That could get us in trouble with the not to exceed, correct, Ms. Dean? Huh? I, I, I want to make sure that we do this correctly.
I trust the counselors know how to do this better than I do. I, I thought that the substituting for this in its entirety was the correct direction to go, but didn't want to correct.
That's what I thought too.
We're going to spend more of that anyways.
All right. Not to exceed?
Where are we going from here?
So the original motion we voted on was to submit that
Right.
As the final motion.
Right.
Which means, we, which means that the text that he is concerned about doesn't exist anymore.
I'm just concerned about the, in this main, in the motion that we voted, it has not to exceed.
The main motion we ended up voting on is that one.
Yeah, we ended up voting on that one.
That's the motion, when we, when we approved the amendment, that's what we approved it to, is what's up there.
That's what I understand.
And then, and then we voted on that to make that the amendment, and then, so that overs, that overwrote this section that currently is phrased as number 27.
But
And then, that's the motion we voted on.
No, I withdrew the substitute motion.
Right. But if I may, Mr. Chairman, the previous speaker, so what you're doing is you're reconsidering this to add not to exceed.
No, it already says not to exceed 1.7 million.
She wants to, so you want to delete
I just want to make sure we have the, what we voted on correctly, that's
Fine.
I apologize. I don't mean to muddy the waters. I just want to make sure it's correct, that somebody doesn't read the minutes.
Right.
What was the main motion as amended that we voted, if I could, through you?
Yeah, I didn't, I amended it to not have that language in it, but I'll put it back in anyway for this, but I had it as... Hold on. Vote to approve the Economic Development Administration's American Rescue Plan Administration ARPA Travel Tourism and Outdoor Recreation for up to 4, 4,400 for the design and construction of the Quin bog. Well, yeah, they have what you have up there.
And that's what we voted on?
Yeah.
Then I withdraw my, okay, that's fine.
Because I just didn't include that other part because I thought you amended it out.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's fine. As long as it's amended. I withdraw. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. So I believe we're going back in order now. Agenda item number 18. Very good, Peggy.
Thanks, John.
Agenda item number 18, vote to approve amendment number two to tie-in bond agreement for the South Street Water Transmission Main and Road Reconstruction Project for $95,000 to provide full-time construction observation and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted three to zero to send it up to the council for further action. I would like to say that during our discussion, I did question this because I thought, I thought at one time we were going to hire a clerk of the works. Rather than have a engineering company be the construction oversight of these projects, we would be hiring someone who would work for the town and would oversee all of our projects. And that's why I was questioning hiring Ty and Bond. I know that, I have had some residents talk to me and tell me that hiring a clerk, clerk of the works would be expensive. We have some, some residents in town have mentioned to me that DPW is top-heavy. I can't, you know, I understand that sentiment. Maybe changes have to be made, I don't know. But I do know that other members of the committee said that this is a sort of a liability insurance to hire an engineering company to oversee the project. But yet I see a lot of road construction in town that we've had problems on, that they have, we've had somebody overseeing the projects, and I don't see any, anybody being called on the carpet for this. No liability for any other projects that have happened around town. You go out on South Street right now, you travel on South Street, it's a mess. And yet Ty and Bond oversaw that project. So my, my only feeling on this is that we would be better off hiring somebody to oversee our projects. And that's someone who's looking out for the town of Southbridge, rather than keep throwing money at Ty and Bond or some other engineering company to oversee our construction projects. And that's all. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Winkley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as I did say at the subcommittee meeting, I had heard a lot of feedback that we are looking for some continuous oversight of our projects to occur on some of our major jobs. This has not been what we have done in the past. We have taken approach to try to save some money and had more, had more selective oversight, meaning part-time oversight and not full-time oversight on our projects. And with hearing some of the ideas that we needed additional oversight, I asked Ty and Bond to provide me with this amendment. This wasn't their idea, this was my idea, saying, look, we are getting a lot of requests for more oversight. I do see a lot of benefit in this project. This is a major technical project. I don't want to talk about the construction of the road up there because it's, I agree, it's a mess. They're not, their job is not to make that road the best conditions while it is under construction. Their job is to get the pipe in the ground so that it's put in properly and oversee the quantities as a job within the specifications of the job. There's very limited of what we can do right now to improve the conditions of the road because you cannot get hot mix at a reasonable price. So we will continue to fill potholes as much as we can, and then win the spring. Hopefully, by the end of March, we will start doing roadwork again, and we'll be able to get hot mix again and make temporary shrims to the road to improve the road conditions while we're doing construction. But this is a major construction job. This is not simple 12-inch ducted iron pipe. We are putting two major transmission mains that feed all the water to this town into that road while the other mains are active. It's a major project. It is in our best interest to have it full-time oversight up there to make sure nothing goes wrong. So, we have found a funding sources in our existing budget to be able to pay for the additional oversight, and I hope you strongly support this because I do, I feel better to have additional eyes out there so that if something does go wrong, we can address it as quickly as possible and be able to save the water to this town if there's a construction issue. Also, we want to make sure it's put in correctly. And then when we do go pave the road, we want full-time oversight there watching the road pavement going on so that we get the best paving conditions we can when we finish this road.
Okay, councilors. Council Lazo?
Can you refresh my memory? How much is the total project number?
The total project, including construction?
Yes.
It's over 3 million.
Excuse me?
Over 3 million. I don't have the...
No, I, I'm fine. I guess I'd, when it comes to oversight and inspectors and testing and all that stuff, you kind of look at the overall cost of the project. I know that I was one that brought up, maybe the town should hire somebody to, you know, a retired inspector that can watch the paving and make sure it's being paved straight, correctly and ground correctly for the projects that we had. We ran into some problems with some of the projects that we paid extras. And I know that testing the asphalt and temperature and stuff, we had a gentleman in inspections that did concrete and bituminous asphalt. He was with us for a couple, a little while, and he left. I thought it was impressive to have somebody like that on staff. Because I know that we ran into issues with cold roll asphalt on part of Main Street, and the seams are not looking good either. But that's for another day. Sometimes the oversight and accountability, that's why, $3 million project, $95,000 doesn't look like, I just, I'm having a tug of war with it. It's a lot of money. I know that we did water relining projects, pump stations, sewer, we did sewer lines in town back in the 80s and mid 80s, and, and we didn't hire anybody to oversee. Hama Clark and Chesler were the ones that took care of that, so to speak, in-house. And I don't know if we have the capability of doing that. That's why not having anybody out there is worse than, you know, paying more money for it. But it's a tough nut to crack for $95,000 to inspect. It's a big number for me. What the other councilors talk?
I, can I just respond? I can tell you right now, we do not have the capabilities of putting somebody out there full-time from my staff. We wouldn't be able to do the other work that we have going on. And it would, you know, full-time oversight, we just wouldn't have a person to be able to put out there. I'd gladly go out there and do it myself, but I don't think that that's the best use of my time.
Council Lazo?
The part that I'm having a hard time with, back when we were doing all those water relining projects with Fantoni and Jill, so, I mean, we were doing some big sewer work, and we owned the landfill, and the DPW was in charge of the landfill. Hama Clark took care of all the inspections and everything down below when we started putting clay liners. And what's getting me is, there was so much stuff going on back then. We don't have less staff today than we did then, do we? I mean, I don't see it. I, that's why I'm having a, we operated out of a tin building on Pleasant Street, and I'm looking at where we are.
I actually think we might have less staff now.
What's that?
I think we actually might have less staff now. I think at one time, the DPW had 25 people, and we're down to 21.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor?
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Heather, I know you have a lot on your plate, but you have four or three more people working on your office as a...
I have three people in my office, that's it. I have an administrator and an engineer and myself. An operations manager that runs the, the operations portion, doesn't do any of the engineering portion, and a foreman.
What their job, we're paying them a lot of money down there. What are they doing? I'm just curious, you know? I should go down there and visit you, but what they're doing, all these people in the office?
Which office?
Working down there at the DPW, your office.
I have an administrator who, who pays all the bills and files a astronomical amount of bills that she has to pay for all the departments that we run. We pay more bills out of the DPW than all the other departments in the town combined. And I think you could back that up with the, so that's all of the POs, everything that's written, all the quotes that have to go in. The operation manager is watching that budget and seeing what work needs to be done and planning the work for the day and making sure that the staff has what needs to be done. And the foreman is watching over the staff.
Thank you.
Council Joe Van?
Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Council Joe Van?
Did you have your hand up first? I'm sorry.
I didn't see him. I didn't see him.
Thank you, through you.
Council Marquetti next.
I'm struggling with this one because I know we've talked about oversight and accountability and hiring somebody to work in the DPW or to oversee all these projects. And we talked about it, and what's the cost benefit analysis for the different type of projects that you have? Could you find somebody? And somebody saying that it's top-heavy, and then, well, we're going to add another person to that. That would be another top-heavy person to just do oversight. I know there's a lot of projects going on, so I'm really, I'm struggling with this because then, you know, we take it out of water capital later on and stabilization, and we talk about water rates. So, yeah, I mean, okay, that, I guess I'm just want to say, for the record, I'm struggling with spending $95,000 for one project. But I do appreciate the, the oversight because we've been critical of some of the projects that we have. So I, I feel for the DPW director because we're trying to find the happy medium. We want oversight, and then we have projects that we have deficiencies with, and are we given the proper tools and capacity for that. So I, I struggle with, with this agenda item, and just for the record. Thank you.
Council Marquetti.
I'm set. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Council Lazo?
Yeah, I'm having a tug of war. I don't think I'm going to vote for it tonight. I'm looking at our department. If we don't have men on the ground, I mean, patch paving and sweeping and pouring sidewalks and working on whatever they're working on, trimming grass and stuff like that, if we had short staff there, I understand. That's not what I'm talking about. When we had, Hama Clark was an engineer, he was department head at the time, the charter was different. We had a junior engineer, which was Chesler. Then we had, we had project managers, we had different things that used to manage. I don't think our management team has been cut. That's the problem I'm having. Because the oversight doesn't come from the guy that sweeps the street and cuts the grass. The oversight comes from the management. Those are the people that go onto the job and watch what's going on. And I'm having a tug of war with that. I don't know if that scope of work to the management team changed. Over the years, if it changed, the minute we don't have oversight, we'll just hire more people. Well, then, how did we do it before? I have, you know, we, we did not have all this nice equipment we have now, which I'm glad that we have, and I support. Our DPW bond is the Taj Mahal compared to the last one we had, and I'm glad and happy for that also. But the thing is, we are bigger and better today than we were then, but we can't do what we used to do then. That's the tug of war I'm having with myself. So for myself, I'm looking at it going, we were putting pumping stations in by, down to a pressure line. We were pleasing the pressure lines. This is like big stuff, not South Street. And I sat there and looked at that back then. And Elm Street, they were relining the water lines at the same time as they were tearing up half the town. And I don't remember it being as disastrous as it is now, as far as, I know you're going to blow up a street, it's going to be a mess. Everybody's going to complain. They'll get over it when the final pavement's done. And that's what I kept saying. Finish the road, ride the bike and figure out the problems. Main Street's falling apart. Coming out of Hamilton Street, I'm stunned. I don't know what to say to the people. I, $95,000 couldn't make that right. And that's why I'm having a, a struggle. I, I don't know if I could support it. I don't think I am. Thank you.
Council Adams?
Just real quick, I want to thank Heather for actually coming up with a solution that we've been complaining about for the last few years. Thanks for taking the time out of your day to actually figure that one out and working with others. Thank you.
I would just like to respond, this will not affect any rates because it's already in the existing budget for water rates. It would not affect our water rates. It's being funded out of, and not cap stabilization, this is being funded out of existing water budget, so it's already figured into the rate.
Council Joe Van?
Thank you. At some point, it does come out of the rate, though. We've already budgeted, so it is a rate issue. So we are spending money that does affect the water rate. It's already accounted for, but it did affect the rate that I'm paying a lot of money for water. So I just want to make that clear. I appreciate the answer. To the previous speakers, I appreciate the fact that the DPW is providing us a solution. I'm just saying, $95,000 is a lot of money. And yes, we talked about accountability. That's why I said we struggle with it. I appreciate the fact that there is a solution here, but I struggle with the fact that we even have to have this solution with the department. And I know the last couple of years has been tough when we do budgets because of the COVID stuff, but I think this year, we really have to have a conversation. We've talked about it for four years, about DPW and the staffing, and do they have the capacity, and what is their job? What do we have? How does it work? How do we do oversight? Because I'm not just going to disagree with Council Lazo's talk about what occurred on a previous project. And I don't know if $95,000 would have fixed that. Okay? But I do know that I don't want the same thing to happen on South Street. I'm not the road person. I'm a counselor that is accountable to voters that are telling me, look at Main Street. Geez, Council Joe Van, accountability oversight, can't you tell that that traffic light is an issue? Oh, why don't we go send, sound another engineer to figure out a traffic light? Pavement falling apart on millions of dollars of project. So yes, I struggle with this $95,000 because it is a lot of money. $95,000 is a highly paid employee for the town of Southbridge. So I do struggle to pay an engineer to be there full-time for what, a six-month project maybe, to be done? Not a year. It's a lot of money, folks. Out of water rates, again, yes, it's accounted for, but I got my water bill. I'm not happy with it. Got my tax bill. I'm not happy with it, just like every other taxpayer. Thank you.
Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Heather, you need help down at the department. You can't hire somebody full-time, have that experience to help you on other project down the road, plus this project, but then hire somebody only for that project, spend the $95,000, and then...
Well, you got to remember, we're starting this project again at the end of March. So just to try to get something funded, we don't have anything in our budget currently. I guess, I guess we could take this money and say we were going to fund it, a person at this point, go through the whole hiring process. We still won't have them at the start of the project to start. And we still will need the engineer to answer technical questions because even, you don't want to take the liability on the town of their engineering to ask the questions. You can't, you can't answer all of the questions internally. There's a lot of questions we can, and there's a lot of times that we do. And yes, there's times that we could do this oversight. But I can't do this oversight and do the oversight at the sewer plant because we're starting the conveyor projects, and do the oversight on East Main Street because that project's going to start, and do the, we can't do the oversight on every single project we have all at the same time, which we have a lot of projects going on.
So you do, can I continue? So you do have an engineer right now working with you, correct?
Ty and Bond is working as an oversight engineer on this project currently. It would just be extending their hours from being part-time to being full-time. Currently, if you look at what was in this, they only had 50 hours budgeted for final paving and cleanup. It's not a lot of time to be overseeing final pavement.
What Matt's your job down in your office?
Matt is the deputy director. He's doing, he's... Matt is the deputy director. He's doing, he's putting all these bid documents together. He's helping doing administration of projects. He's doing the day-to-day projects when people come in and want to do a street opening permit, want to do a different permit. He's doing all the stormwater stuff. He did all that stormwater regulations. Um, you know, he's doing our different projects in the department going, moving forward. His job is not to go outside and do oversight.
Thank you.
Counsel Lozo.
I'm going to just pick up on another department. You, you mentioned so many projects, which we're all excited about. We, we love the development of Southbridge. If a building inspector can deal with, I don't know, 80 permits, 100 permits, and he's in that little truck all day, inspecting everything all the time, and we cannot watch five, six, what, I'm just looking at the sewer project. You don't sit on site when you inspect something. You inspect it at intervals, much like if I install a sewer line, I have to install the pipe, call, someone goes and inspects it, I backfill it. Um, it's not like a guy has to sit there. And, and this is what I'm talking about oversight. If, if we didn't engineer it properly, when we engineered the, the, the project, and then as the project rolls out, we have the person that engineered it deal with the engineering, you might understand that.
Well, there's always, when you're digging in the ground, you always find technical problems where things need to be adjusted. It's not, we're not talking something that is, you can put a line in a piece of paper and you dig it up and what you thought was under the ground is not the same. So something needs to be adjusted, a decision needs to be made. We're talking 20 and 24-inch pipe. We've had to make changes already because of conditions not being what we thought they were going to be.
And I understand that. My, my question is, when there's a problem, like there, I'm in construction, we have problems every day. Nothing ever runs smooth. You'd like to have it run smooth, but usually in new construction, we have control over it. On the, dealing with old and transferring it to new makes it more difficult, not impossible. But the thing is, on inspection points, I look at it as if somebody down at the K Street needs an inspection, the person goes out and inspects it. When I look at the building inspector and he's got dozens and dozens of projects, whether it be a roof or foundation or whatever, it's similar to what you're talking about as far as inspecting and oversight. That's something I thought we could do in-house. Or, like I said, if it's something that we need to get a, a, a retired inspector or an inspector that's an individual that, that freelances like that, that was what I was thinking about. But just throw it into Ty and Bond and just say, we don't have the time. Well, make time. And this is where I think the rubber hits the road. Maybe we don't have the right people to take care of what we need taken care of. And if our engineer, the little guy there, I forget his name, if he can't handle it, get somebody to handle it. We still have the same management structure in DPW. We're doing less work today than we did in the eighties, and we can't do it. What's that telling me? I understand manpower. When it comes to maintaining the town, that takes a lot of manpower. Plowing, sanding, salting, cutting the grass, grooming the town, curb, curb appeal, as they say, pluck the sidewalk, the weeds. We have a lot of stuff going on at DPW, but I'm, I just, I can't see spending this kind of money. And, you know, we're going to take it out of the water fund. No big deal, right? I live in Southbridge. We have water bills. That's, that's where we get whacked. The fees, the tax, the tax, the fees. Then all of a sudden, why is everything so high? $95,000, $98, whatever. So I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm done for the evening.
Anyone else? Very good. Roll call. I'm sorry, Mr. Manager.
I don't want to step on Ms. Blakely's toes, but, you know, I've been at a lot of these DPW subcommittee meetings when people have asked questions of her. Um, and I've heard comments from citizens as well as, you know, members of the subcommittee that they want somebody out there, not just dropping in on a project, but out there, especially when they're paving, watching to make sure how, how much they're putting down, checking on how much, um, you know, their truckloads are, a variety of different things. So when I sent out my budget letter to staff, I said to them, we're, you know, as we're still coming out of COVID, we're not looking to add any staff. The only thing that we may be doing from a management point is filling the IT position, but we also talked about oversight. So I did sit with Ms. Blakely and Ms. Harnoyes the other day when we talked about the DPW budget, about whether or not we would get an individual who would take on project oversight in the, the appropriate months of the year and in the other portion of the year, look at stormwater and other things. Um, you know, I rely on Matt a lot of times. Uh, he's doing a lot of projects. You'd be surprised. Um, we've had some issues here where I have to get inspections as well as Matt to come look at a variety of different projects. I had him looking at something adjacent to Town Hall the other day. Um, this morning, when I pulled in, I was late for my meeting with Counselor Chairman, Council Chairman Daniel, because there was another fender bender in the parking lot. We have a lot of fender benders right out here. And so the other week, I asked Matt, um, if he would put together a proposal for me to reroute the traffic and come up with new spaces and what the engineering and the costs would be. So, you know, he does an awful lot of things in addition to his regular duties that people probably don't see. Um, unfortunately, the cost to reroute the traffic in a horseshoe pattern and put in the six spaces, I asked him, was going to cost $75,000 per space. But, you know, we're trying to use our people on a regular basis and I utilize them just as much as Ms. Blakely does. But they're doing an awful lot of things that people may not know behind the scenes. You know, I had him checking out a, a concrete structure the other day because I had complaints from staff and citizens and, and then I have questions about the parking. So, um, you know, he's very responsive. He gets back. He does a lot of good work. So just to that point, but also that we are looking at a longer-term solution. We were talking about it when the budget comes up for presentation. We'll be talking about whether or not it's cost-effective to put in somebody who will be able to address this as part of their duties as well as they take on some of the new challenges that get presented to DPW such as stormwater management. So.
Counsel Adams.
Last thing I'll say, again, I appreciate the fact that Ms. Blakely has come up with an idea, a solution based off counsel's, uh, two and a half years, three-year complaints about no oversight. And I'm glad to see that the town manager, the accountant and the DPW director have actually had, excuse me, um, serious conversations about this instead of just talking about it. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you. I, I agree with you, Counselor Adam. Thank you, Heather, for the work, but $95,000 to guys just supervisor the work on, on South Street or West Street, that's a lot of money. I mean, we're not, we're not, uh, against the idea. We ask for that, but $95,000, what is it? Is it going to just, he's going to do something else for the town? Or that's only Pacific, his job is going to do only washing those people doing the road and, and the work on that Pacific road only? That's the whole concern. $95,000 for a guy just standing there, not helping with different works you need. That's why I say if we can hire somebody for the town, he can do that job and help with different work she's behind, that will be a great idea. But to hire a person only $95,000 just to do that Pacific job only, and the rest of time, what is he going to do? Drink coffee? What is he going to do? I mean, he's not, they don't, they don't need him all day long. No, I'm just, I'm not specific to you, but I'm looking at you. You know, you're a handsome guy, but I'm saying, I'm saying $95,000, that's a lot of money to hire somebody just sitting there drinking coffee. I mean, this is the whole idea. Thank you.
Very good. Please state your name for the record.
George Shania. 23 Teresa Rav here in Southbridge.
Thank you.
Uh, I've been a critic, recent critic of the DPW and the direction they were going with the Main Street project. I've been to DPW subcommittee meetings criticizing the work that's been done on Main Street, uh, because of what I've seen. Uh, I spent some time on Main Street, just hanging around, being retired and just moving back from Florida. And I watched them do a paving project that was not supervised by anybody from the town. May have been an engineer or somebody there from the company that, uh, was overseeing the project. There was no engineering being oversight. I shouldn't say engineering. There was nobody there being oversight during the paving. Uh, I brought my concerns to the DPW director at the DPW meeting and the council. And one of the incidents that I observed was a, uh, paving machine being broken down for a couple hours in front of the Southbridge Savings Bank, Cornerstone, and lines of trucks lined up across the street with asphalt. Uh, in my construction, limited construction that I did was when those machines break down for a period of time and the asphalt's sitting in the truck, the temperature of the asphalt goes down. And they call that a cold roll paving. And the life expectancy of that project goes down when that happens. On this project here, they used a poly, uh, type of asphalt that was explained to us exactly what it does, but knowing what that is, that temperature has to be maintained during the whole project to have a binder and to be able to work with it and for the life expectancy to be there. As the temperature goes down, you lose that. So at those last meetings that I've been to the DPW, I criticized that work. And I also found out that it's really not her job to be there all day long because she has other stuff that's more important or just as important to do. She oversees a department, many, many jobs. She oversees the water supply. She oversees the water, the sewer treatment. Sure, we hire people to run those facilities, but it still takes a department head to oversee that all. Just as you have the manager oversee the whole complete town. You don't want him out being at the fire department doing what they do all day long. You hire people to do that. So I was critical of the projects going on on South Street and West Street on how this was going to happen. And I was amazed to find out, I believe it was only 50 hours of oversight that was going to be included in this project. So with this money here, I felt there was good money being spent, $95,000 to have somebody on site every single day that construction was going down. From the time the shovel was first put into the ground until the last paving is going to be done. Because if we don't have that oversight, you're going to have the same situation that happened on Main Street happen on those projects there because we're not going to have the oversight. And we can't expect her or her department to be there every single day to watch the project happen. You can't. So sometimes being penny wise is penny foolish. And in this case here, I think $95,000 is money spent. And I believe there's more than just the oversight of the road project with that 95. I believe the scope of the project is more, uh, not just being there. I believe it was explained to us at the meeting, if I remember right, billing, uh, making sure that the, the product is what you're going to be going into the ground, all those kinds of things. So I think it's important that when you're spending this kind of money, we can't expect her to be out there, to be doing this job every day because we're going to be critical of what she does or not getting done. And I would just ask you to support this. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. Would you like to have a roll call vote on this?
Counsel Dow?
No.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
No.
Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three. Agenda item 19, vote to approve a request for $45,000 from Water Filter Plant Capital, 610-450-583000-22582, and $50,000 from Water Capital Reserve, 610-450-583000-91250, for a total of $95,000 to Fiscal Year 16 Water, South Street Water Observation, uh, Main Design, 420000-530000-63750, to cover the cost of Amendment Two to add full-time construction observa, observation to Ty and Bond's agreement for the South Street Water Transmission Main and Road Reconstruction Project and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Does that move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Do you need to address this? No, this is the funding for the, the motion we just passed. Okay. Roll call vote.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
No.
Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
And Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Agenda item number 20, vote to approve change order number eight to J. H. Lynch and Sons' contract for Main Street Intersection Improvements Project for a net increase of $628,517.59, funded with appropriations from ARPA and water stabilization, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Does that move?
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Point of order. I think this needs to be split into two votes because stabilization requires a two-thirds majority. I think we talked about it at the meeting, didn't we?
I can hear Counsel Steves.
I think we talked about that at DPW, didn't we, that this needs to be split? Because stabilization requires a two-thirds majority.
There's two different items after. There's a, there's.
Oh, this is, this is just a change order. Okay.
Yes, this is just a change order.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Very good. Uh, Counsel Marketti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is voted three to nothing to send up to the council for further action.
What was the vote? I couldn't hear.
Uh, three to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, Ms. Blakely.
So, this is the final, um, add, addition and deduct, deduct for contract items for the Main Street project. Um, as you see, there are additions. These are all bid contract items that either went over the quantities that were estimated in the bid or under the quantities that were estimated in bid. So a majority of this work was for additional water line work that needed to be done to extend the water lines outside the original project limits. Um, for example, the water line was supposed to start at Everett Street. It ended up having to go all the way down to in front of the bank on Main Street. It was not supposed to go that far. It had to go that far because when we uncovered something underneath the ground, we couldn't do the connection where it was originally proposed because there was a duct bank. In addition, the water main was extended to go further up Main Street to Pine Street because that wasn't originally shown on the drawings. There's a whole bunch of water lines that were extended. The majority of the cost is associated with those extended of the lines. There's some additional valves in here. Um, there's the cost of the ledge removal that we didn't originally have enough quantities in here. I'm trying to hit the high points. Um, you can see there's a long laundry list. So this is one of the things that the engineer does track for us. And an engineer does track is the quantities of what we're paying and what we're paying on, um, to put this together. So I don't like it either, but I do know where a lot of this money came from and a lot of it came from the water line. And that's why we're asking for part of it come from ARPA funding and part of it to come out of the water stabilization fund.
So?
I think so.
Okay, very good. Counselors. Okay, Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you. So that work is already done?
Correct. All this work is already completed. It was completed as part of the project. So we basically, you know, you pay, we, we asked for 200 feet of water. I'm going to oversimplify this, but we asked for 200 feet of the water line and they had to put 250 feet of water line in. So you have to pay for that exceedance. We asked for, I'm going to try to make another thing. We, we needed to put 10 biodyrhydrons in, but we only early had five. So then you don't have to pay for 10. You deduct your contract down. So there's a plus and minuses based on the bid price for the actual quantities you put in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. Roll call.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yeah.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
And Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Very good. Passes seven zero. Item number 21, vote to approve appropriation of $200,000 of ARPA funds to the Main Street Intersection Improvements Project to cover a portion of Intersection Improvements Project to cover a portion of pending change order number eight to the contract with J. H. Lynch &amp; Sons.
Some move?
Second.
Okay, this is to begin the funding for the motion we just passed. Anyone else said? Counsel Lazo?
I know the improvements are the water and the extra footage. At what point do we hold them accountable on the paving job?
So we, this was discussed a little bit in my subcommittee meeting, that we have an agreement with them that we will come back in the spring and assess all the conditions of the paving because we had the failure already in that one area. We have a timeframe already established with them that we would come back and walk the whole area and then make a determination of what we were going to do with
Is there a holdback?
Yes, we have a retainage on the project. I'm not sure where it's sitting. Usually it's 5%. So we're probably still holding our 5% retainage because they haven't asked for a reduction of the retainage.
Thank you.
In addition, we also still have their bond and a one-year warranty.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Item number 22, vote to approve appropriation of $428,517.59 from Water Stabilization Fund 0845 to the Main Street Intersection Improvements Project to cover a portion of pending change order number eight to the contract with J. H. Lynch &amp; Sons. This requires a two-thirds vote. Some roll?
Second.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
This was voted again three to zero at DPW to move up to council. Thank you.
Very good.
And I just have one thing. Counsel Marquetti actually did ask us to do a formal transfer request that did go in today. I don't know if you received a copy of it or not.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
A transfer request form?
Oh, yes, I did. Thank you.
So on the transfer request form, because I don't sure if all of you have received it, but the balance in the account, the water stabilization count currently prior to the transfer is $1,729,963.41.
Very good. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes. Item number 23, vote to instruct the town manager to solicit bids to inspect, remove, and replace the town hall carpets and subflooring in the hallways, town clerk's office, assistant's office, and town manager's office.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marquetti?
This was voted three to nothing to come up here to the town council for a vote. I had asked that this be put on the agenda because I had, we had been talking about replacing the carpet, well, since, I believe since last summer, we started talking about this. There's a lot of problems with the carpets in the town hall, especially the hallway. Some of the offices, people have been tripping on them. I had originally asked for a funding source. The members of my committee asked that we not use, I had asked for sidewalks funds. They asked that we not use that. Since then, I have seen from Ms. Harneys some additional funding sources, money that for budgeted items that have not been used, $100,000 for the handicap ramp, almost $60,000 for windows. These are items that have not been used yet. And so possibly we could use some of that. I'm not sure. But right now, we decided not to put a funding source in there till we find out. I think the conversation was until we find out how much it's going to cost, then we'll come back and take a look where the funding source will come from. So thank you.
Very good. Counsel Jovan, then Counsel Adams.
Thank you. Through you. No doubt that I agree that we have to, you know, do something to address some renovations in the town hall. I'm just sad that we have to have a DPW subcommittee say, vote to instruct the town manager, that we just can't say, hey, go out and solicit bids. We'll give you the funding source. And that the agenda item should be vote to support renovations instead of saying vote to instruct the town manager to go out and get bids. There's no doubt if I had to ask the town manager and said, hey, go out and get some bids, he's going to go out and get some bids and say, hey, I've got to bring it to you during budget or whatever. So I just, with all due respect to the subcommittee, I feel that I just didn't like the vote to instruct him to do that. I think a simple ask, I know the counselor has been saying, we'd like to get it done. And so, hey, let's vote to support funding renovations in the town hall. So I just, to that point, because no doubt, the town manager will get it done. As far as funding, we have $60,000 sitting in town hall renovations. And eventually, guess what fiscal year the town council decided that we're going to do some town hall renovations? Anybody want to take a guess?
That was 14, wasn't it?
FY 2013. We are now moving into FY 23. 10 years, we've had $60,000 sitting in a renovations account for this town hall with nothing being done. I think I brought that point up many years ago, a couple of years ago, when the former town manager said, hey, I'd like some money to talk about windows and engineering that is sitting in here as well. So there's no doubt that we've had money earmarked to this town hall. So just get it done. DPW, go out and get somebody in here, solicit some bids, bring it to town council and say, hey, let's get it done. Money's been sitting there. 10 years. 10 years of taxpayers' money sitting here with nothing being done. Just leave it at that. Because sidewalk money, we tried to give sidewalk money, additional sidewalk money. That didn't go anywhere either. So I'm not even going to address the sidewalk issue. But plenty of money in town hall renovations sitting there for many years. So this town manager, sure, you can get some bids pretty quick, get somebody in here, and just, as I say, get it done. I think we talked about town clerk. I thought the town clerk's office was done at one time, wasn't it?
No.
It was supposed to be done.
It was supposed to be done.
He never came back.
It never got done.
Right? It was supposed to be done. How many years ago?
The gentleman that did the original work never came back.
Never came back. But we, again, never followed up, not through the DPW's issue. I'll talk about that's formal. I'm not going to belabor that point because it's a common theme that that individuals had. So, all right, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just reiterate kind of what, well, how Counsel Marquetti found those funds. And obviously, it was from the capital funds that we had talked about, I don't know, back 2018, actually, 2019, when we did the budget for FY 20. We found a bunch of funds that had never been touched in five, six years and stuff like that. And one of them was for the windows and all that kind of stuff. So I didn't know when I spoke with Karen about this, that she would like to take a look at kind of scrubbing that list to make sure what the department has, like she had done a few years back, to make sure that that funding was still there. I think the last update for that was June of 21, June of 21. So she'd like to take a little bit of time. But I agree with the previous speaker. I agree with Counsel Marquetti. We do have funds there available somewhere to pay for this carpet or tile or whatever is going to go up into it. So, thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
Who's putting the spec together on what has to happen with the carpet? Because I know it was a nightmare the last time they went on the cheap and they did not use the proper spec. And they didn't go with the local contractor who had the right spec. And now the local contractor's mad and doesn't want to do anything for the town. But who's going to do the spec on the flooring?
Well, right now, it's falling on my office. Previously, we did not do the spec for that job, by the way.
Oh, okay. So?
So as you can see, we ripped out the carpet on the downstairs where it was the worst because we wanted to see what was going on with the subfloor. And we have definitely determined the subfloor is really poor. So our spec will be including new subfloor. And we will not be putting carpet over the concrete because obviously, we don't feel like that was the right method. So we're trying to do some research prior to putting the spec together.
Good. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan?
Just to Counsel Adams' point, the list that, the dollars that I spoke was, was as of January 18, 2022, at 3:13 PM by the finance office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for being specific.
You're welcome, Mr. Counsel.
I didn't ring up the steps.
I do do my homework as well as Counsel Marquetti can sometimes.
We all said? Great. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 24, vote to award the contract to Arden Group Incorporated in the amount of $12,000 for the installation of the sodium hydroxide bulk tank at the water treatment plant from account number 610-450-583000-22582, Plant Capital, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Some move?
Second.
Counsel Marquetti?
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a late addition to our agenda, DPW's subcommittee meeting. Apparently, it's an emergency, I think. It was voted three to nothing to send it up to council for further action. Thank you.
Heather?
So at the time of the meeting, we had just received the bids. There was some confusion originally. Our meeting was Tuesday. We weren't getting the bids until Wednesday. So we actually had the bid information. So we asked if we could go proceed with it. Right now, as you're aware, we had purchased the bulk tanks last year. The water department has removed the old bulk tank. The new bulk tanks are waiting to go in. This will be to do the actual physical replumbing of the system, to do the connections of the system. The water department has saved a lot of money by doing a lot of demo by themselves, purchasing the tanks previously to have them on site and ready to go. Right now, we're operating out of the totes, which obviously are not the same volume as what we have in our big bulk tanks when we have them, which is our driver concern and want to have the quickest turnaround as possible. These were all solicited following chapter that required procurement requirements. Two quotes were received. It was a formal bid, multiple requests, advertised and everything. So we have the quotes. I don't believe you guys had a copy of the contract filled out. It's not signed, obviously, yet, but I do have copies of that if you would like copies for your records. This is a contract that was in the bid documents. It's just filled out with the names and the amounts now. It's our standard contract.
Very good. Counselors? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Anyone unanimous of all present?
Does anybody want a copy?
Item number 25. Thank you, Heather. Item number 25, vote to ratify the contract between Reno HVAC and Controls and Town of South Ridge in the amount of $51,470 for the HVAC replacement of RTU number three and four, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Some move?
Second.
Counsel Jovan?
Thank you. This was the item that was supposed to come up, just a contract, I believe it was an emergency repair at the library. I know Ms. Morrissey was going to be present for that, but Mr. Town Manager?
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is for the library. So my understanding is the rooftop HVAC units up there were put up about 20 years ago. And we have a primary and secondary, well, we have four up there, but they're in pairs. And what had happened was they had a complete failure of one of the rooftop units. The other one was at the end of its useful life. There is money in the state aid to libraries fund. That's where the funding source would be for this. Ms. Morrissey came to me about this. She also, I think we looped in, Ms. Blakely from DPW, because it was a building-related matter. We wound up applying for a Department of Capital Asset Management waiver for procurement purposes because this had to be replaced in a timely manner because they use it for the heating and cooling of the library and where the backup one was at the end of its useful life as well. We felt prudent to replace the first. Turned out, we got a better deal if we bought two. And it came to our attention because of supply chain issues. They said if the other one goes, it was going to take a significant amount of time. We'd be better off getting both at the same time. DCAM approved the purchase of both of them. What a DCAM waiver does is it recognizes a construction-related emergency and allows you to bypass certain portions of the procurement rules and advertising rules so you can just get to the equipment as quickly as possible. So that's what we did in this instance. It was proper and it was approved. And so now, we did go out, you still have to do a solicitation of quotes. Reyno had the best one, and it was cheaper to get the high-efficiency units, which are here before you. We use the standard form contract that we've utilized with other projects. Under $100,000, we just added in the provision that said it was procured pursuant to a DCAM waiver.
Very good, counselors. Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 26, vote to accept the funds secured for the Town of South Ridge by Senator Fatman in the amount of $50,000 for the emergency repairs to the police department HVAC system, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Some move?
Mr. Manager?
Again, thank you, Chairman Daniel, others. So what this really is, it's a contract, believe it or not, that we need to execute in order to receive the funds that Senator Fatman secured for us last summer after we had a catastrophic failure of the HVAC system over at the police station. We had to expend, I believe, $75,000 to replace the chiller. He asked if he could help out in any way. Both he and Representative Durant tried their best. Senator Fatman did come in the fall and present us a ceremonial check for the $50,000. When the question was raised, I want to say by Counsel Jovan, did you get the funds yet? We did a quick check and realized that we had not, in fact, received those. So when we did the paper trail to the senator's office, it turns out we had to get some paperwork to the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. I wrote a letter to them. We dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and they said if we executed this, we would get the money as soon as possible. So I'm here this evening asking for your approval to sign this, and we will receive the $50,000. They characterized it essentially as a grant, but it was an earmark and a bond bill. But we'll treat it as such. So you're voting to accept it and allow me to sign all paperwork relative to that to get it.
Very good. Counselors? I'd like to thank Senator Fatman's office for his help in getting this emergency funding to us. Anything helps, and this is a big help. So thank you. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion passes. Item number 28, vote to refer the amendment to South Ridge zoning map back to planning board to receive public comment at a future hearing. A, changing 333 East Main Street through 505 East Main Street from manufacturing to general business. B, changing 1, 6, and 28 Sandersdale Road and Map 44 Lot 17 from manufacturing to general business. C, changing 23, 27, 31, 35, 53, and 59 Gulf Street from manufacturing to R2. D, changing 39 Old Woodstock Road from manufacturing to R2. E, changing 70, 78 Genesee Street from office research to R2. F, changing Map 44 Lots 29 and 37 Kingsley Street from office research to R2. G, changing 72 Doughty Street and Map 44 Lots 47, 55, and 56 Doughty Street from office research to manufacturing. H, changing 66, 73, 94, 105, 121, 126, 134, and 234 Ashland Ave from office research to manufacturing.
Some moved?
Second.
Very good. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, simply put, it's normal protocol for it to go in front of a planning development, then the town council for refer back to the planning board to have their public hearing. We discussed this back in February, I'm sorry, the beginning of February, I was voting unanimously to send up to the town council. And then, we've done this before. We kind of clarified the next steps if the town council approves this motion, then it'll go back to the planning board. Planning board will have the public hearing. After the public hearing, then we'll have After the public hearing, then we'll have a, I think it's a joint planning and development, and I'm sorry, planning board and town council meeting to approve this, so. And then I'll pass it on to Ms. Ramsey.
Eric.
So the Counselor Adams is largely correct. The public hearings should typically held jointly with the town council and the planning board. We could hold them separate if the schedules don't work out, whichever happens. However, as we've seen in the past, I think it works best for all parties involved to be present and to hold that joint meeting. Therefore, if changes can be made, or, you know, reasons why the planning board has looked at some of these changes, you know, why they're looking to make those changes, you know, get all that out in the open at one, you know, one fell swoop, one time. If I may go through the map changes real quick. The biggest change is here in red, this area currently is all manufacturing zone. However, the uses in that area are, vast majority of them are business uses. And as such, we have had numerous requests for businesses or potential businesses who would like to occupy some of these spaces for us to do this zone change. Additionally, we have been looking at, you know, businesses that would like to go into existing spaces that can't because the use is not allowed in manufacturing, or the use is allowed by special permit in manufacturing, and it's an allowed use in general business. So because of the many requests the planning board has received and my office has received, you know, this is what we spoke of. So this property, all the way to the west, is Edwards Gas Station, and would change all of the East Main Street from Edwards Gas Station along to Big Y along that side of the road, and from the Dunkin' Donuts and Stebbins Garage, I believe there's another garage in there as well, to Chasmas, essentially to Chasmas and the property that surrounds it on the southern side of East Main Street and Sandersdale. Additionally, we're looking at RMG, their property, which is 1 to 11 Sandersdale, to include that as well. Again, their use does not fit with a manufacturing use. Other changes that are being proposed are really just to clean up, I don't know if they're, you know, I don't know the reason why they were zoned the way they were. However, if we go to the current zoning, for example, this parcel right here in purple is a single-family home, and it's zoned Office Research. The two parcels just to the north of it, as well as the parcels across on Gulf Street, the vast majority of them are residences. There is one formally industrial use right here, however, that's been purchased by a church, and as such, is more amenable to a residential use, so therefore, we're proposing those changes. On Ashland Avenue, the biggest changes that we're doing is just to kind of incorporate the area to be, that is currently Office Research into manufacturing. The uses that are in there are manufacturing uses. We have Superior Cake, Hardline Heat Treating, various other businesses that are of an industrial nature that fit in with a manufacturing zone. So in addition to that, we've included Mr. Peapi's landscaping yard, which is an allowed use in manufacturing, but is not allowed in Office Research. So that is here on Doughty Street. So those are the biggest changes, really. Other than that, it's really cleaning up this map some. You know, you look here in the south, the very end, we have extended the zone line from 300 feet at Ashland Avenue to incorporate the entirety of these two properties. Those are properties that are owned by MBS, so McGilvery Brothers. You know, their entire parcel is manufacturing. Now, currently, the zoning bylaw does state that what the zone is at the frontage accounts for the uses on the entire property. However, due to the way that banks look at funding and the way that, you know, appraisers review properties and things like that, zoning the entire property is manufacturing makes the most sense and is beneficial to them. They've been a great business to work with in our office, and they've, you know, they provide a lot of jobs to Southbridge residents, so. Counselor Mark Eddy, we've included street names and the waterways for you, just to clarify that. It was a, thank you for making that suggestion. I should have done that in the first place.
How's that? Great. Counselor Lozlo, then Counselor Steves.
Clarify something for me, because I don't understand. When you, when they change from manufacturing to general business, if it's manufacturing, you automatically are allowed to have general business, no? And I thought that the heavy industrial zone, basically, you could do anything. On the heavy industrial zone, it, I'm just going over what I thought. Why would you go away from manufacturing to general business and not leave it manufacturing if general business is allowed on the manufacturing?
Because it's not under, under the current zoning, it's not. As of 2018, with the zone changes that were made with the new bylaws, those uses are no longer allowed.
Do we have manufacturing spots in town that is zoned that way?
Yes.
That will pick up these changes? I'm just getting to the point that we don't manufacture much, but we do have people that want to come in and manufacture, you know, crushed glass or something like that, and then they're looking for manufacturing space, and we're degreasing it. Or is this just a bad area for it?
This, well, it wasn't necessarily a bad area. It was more that the use, the current uses within there are business uses. They're not manufacturing uses. So therefore, to more be in compliance with the current zoning, we're proposing this change.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually should have brought this up at PND, but it didn't occur to me. I was curious about why you, if you're making these changes here, why aren't you changing the, all of these residential houses down along, down along Ashland to a more residential zone, because they're definitely not manufacturing?
So that was discussed at length at a couple of the last planning board meetings, and I will say that the board is currently reviewing that.
Okay.
In the interest of time, because we have potential applications that will be affected by this change, we thought to bring this to you first. And we're working on a couple of different options for those properties from the town line moving up that are currently residential uses, but in a manufacturing zone.
Yeah, exactly, like most of those things.
It's in the works, but not to muddy the waters too much. We just didn't want to, you know, make too many changes at once, is essentially what we wanted to do.
Okay.
Counselor Mark Eddy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, is this working? Can you hear me?
Doug, yeah.
All right. My question is, why would you change manufacturing to R2? Because if you do that, manufacturing can never go back in there, and to me, it sounds like it's, it would almost be anti-economic development. We want manufacturing to come to Southbridge. If we take away a manufacturing designation in an area, that's it, they're not coming back in there. So I understand some of them going from manufacturing to general business because I'm looking at the zoning bylaws, the use, the table of uses, I understand that, but to change it from manufacturing to R2, or Office Research to R2, that's it. They're never, they're not going to be able to go in there after that.
That's correct. I will say the average property size for the, what we're proposing for changing from manufacturing to R2 and the one from Office Research to R2 is about half an acre. So manufacturing typically is done on a larger scale, especially in, you know, a bigger-scale operation. Most manufacturers aren't looking for a half-acre parcel. They're looking for several acres. They're looking for 10, 20 acres. You know, by the time you put a building on a half-acre lot, there's no room for parking. Or by the time you put parking on a half-acre lot, there's no room for a building. Additionally, the uses of these buildings are residential. So while we have residential uses, you know, they should, in the eyes of the planning board, they should be residentially zoned. Now, zoning, of course, is a, not a static document, it's a living document. This map is living as well. Should the needs arise in the future for someone to do large-scale manufacturing or small-scale manufacturing, we would be back before you to change those zones yet again. You know, if somebody bought up all the lots on Doughty Street and Kingsley and Jenison, let's say, that are all R2, and wanted to put their factory in that location, well, we'd be back to you to change that zone to manufacturing, and then the planning board will combine those lots into one, and, you know, potentially, a large-scale manufacturing could be built.
Okay. I know there was one building, I forget what street it was, somebody wanted to put a church in there. Counselor Steves actually mentioned that a church doesn't need the designation. I think, I believe Counselor Steves said that a church can go anywhere, correct?
That is correct.
But if somebody wanted to come in there and put a manufacturing, because it used to be a manufacturing, they wouldn't be able to do it because you've changed it to R2 now, so.
That's correct. It would require a zone change, again, if possible.
We'd be going back out. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lozlo.
I'm not sure about the numbers, but I, I'm referring to the Stanco manufacturing building that is now a church. Is that on the Gulf Street change to residential?
It is, yes.
So that building can never be manufacturing again? Or would have to come back?
It would have to come back with another zone change to go back to a manufacturing use.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor?
We're just sending this back to planning.
Yep, just sending it back.
We're just sending it back.
That's all, just sending it back. All those in favor? Anyone opposed to sending it back?
He is. No, no, I'm not opposed. Really. No, no, I want this to go through, because I, we've got projects waiting in the wings. I'm sorry, the planning board is currently looking at April 6th. They were waiting for this confirmation to confirm those dates. You know, we have to get notice out to the residents, so if we do hold a joint public hearing, that would be the preferred date by the planning board. However, we are open to other considerations.
April 6th?
Yes.
April 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Item number 29, discuss COVID-19 update and take any action thereof. Is there anything you need to add to, Mister Manager, to what you said previously?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I think everything I said under manager's announcements is really germane to this particular item here. The number of cases are dropping precipitously. We were working together with the Board of Health with their recommendation and the School Department in solidarity just to maintain what Dr. Vilar had previously told the families that they were going to maintain the mask mandate for additional two weeks. Additionally, Mr. Pelletier told me that although they've had clinics with the town, the school, and even for the public, they've had plenty of doses, and the interest in vaccinations is going down. Harrington Hospital said in their call today they're seeing the same trend, to the point I think they're going to be closing their testing station because most people, I know my family just got their home testing kits from the federal government this past week. I think most people can test at home nowadays, and I think with the numbers dwindling, fear and fear, people need, feel the need to go get vaccinated. So I'd like to think we're at the end of the tunnel. We've been seeing the light for some time, and as soon as we get change in recommendation from the Board of Health or two weeks passes, we'll be looking to lift the mandate here in the town hall and all the other public buildings.
Very good. Counselor Lozlo.
I have got some complaints from parents that all the other school districts around us and all the other towns no longer have masks. In Southbridge, for some reason, we're so special, our kids are all still wearing masks. I just, for the life of me, don't understand Southbridge when it comes to the COVID. Maybe we're just a diseased town more than others, but the thing is, the way our Board of Health reads it and the way the other Board of Health reads it must be different. Some are following the science. Nobody knows what science they're following. It's just, parents are upset with it. It's like, yeah, I'm going to take my kid out of the system, the usual, you know, we have enough running out of town now. I just think that, lift it as soon as possible. Ridiculous.
Anyone else? Mister McCall.
I don't disagree in certain parts about, we're getting close to taking these off. What the trends were in Southbridge were not mirroring the rest of the communities around us in the state, and that was the concern expressed to me by Mister Pelletier, not at the most recent meeting, but the meeting before about two weeks ago, that our numbers were still pretty high. They weren't seeing periods of time with low numbers of cases. They would go a day or two, and they'd get a high spike back in cases, and our positivity rate remained much higher than other communities. So that was the rationale, as I understood it, why they were continuing to recommend the mask mandate stay in place. So it was, it was really based on the numbers and the number of cases and the positivity rate here.
Counselor Jovan.
Yeah, thank you, through you. I share the concern of Counselor Lozlo with some of the parents, but I do understand where we are, the position that we are in the Town of Southbridge. We were one of the towns at the forefront when we, when COVID first hit with the EOC and the mitigations, and our numbers were the lowest at the time, and now, for some reason, we're among the highest. I would just ask the town manager to have a conversation with the director of that department that their agenda is light, because I'm sure that if people would have known that they were going to take a vote, because my understanding, listening to the school committee meeting, was that there was a vote of the Board of Health to keep masks on. Yet, on their agenda that they posted, all it says is COVID update, and it says, "See, discuss current status and act on anything there too." Had people known, there might have been a vote or discussion as to continued masks and wearing of masks and implications in schools, that there may have been some participation by public members to that. To me, I, we on this town council probably have the most detailed agendas of any community in the area. I really believe that, because I look at some of these, and I have no clue what they're talking about. I just ask, if they're going to have a vote at the next meeting, that they actually put that in the agenda, that, so people know that that is the actual agenda item, I'm not going to file any complaint regarding that, but I think it needs to, a little more detail in their agenda. And if you take a look, Mister Town Manager, you see some other items that may need a little more discussion, because we're going to talk about blight. They list four addresses, but they don't say what they're talking about blight. Is it continued orders? Is it discussion of status of those properties? It's great that they have blight, but, and we talked about blight a lot on this council, so if you could have that conversation, I appreciate it, Mister Manager.
Anyone else? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's interesting to Counselor Jovan, because I brought that up to them before when they were not putting, they were putting that same item on their agenda, and I said, you know, you should let people know that you may be voting on something like this, and we had an argument about it, and I believe Counselor Lozlo was there, quite a few people were there to voice their opinion on that matter. I believe it was for private. I believe it was for private places as well, and so, now, I'm concerned that they didn't adhere to it again. So based on, looking at this agenda item, I guess I have to ask the town manager real quick, has there been any cases within the town hall or COVID cases within the town hall that have been attributed to either members or people being in the town hall? Hope I worded it right.
So the last time I asked Mr. Pelletier this question, it may have been not this most recent meeting, our COVID meeting, but the time before, and you're talking about transmission between coworkers or other colleagues. I was not aware that we had had any instances of that here in the town hall. Almost every case that I was aware of, people had contracted it due to familial interaction, mostly around the holidays.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
And into that, I believe part of the rationale this time for carrying it on for the two weeks was because, not only, I neglected to mention this, the high positivity rate, but because of the school break, it was concerned that, given our high positivity rate, this last week being school vacation, these kids might interact and contract it and bring it back into the schools, so.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. So, you know, I completely understand where everybody's coming from with the mask issue, but, you know, I think we're at a point now where it's, you know, if it's not happening within our town halls, we have a lot of Plexiglas up, people can wear them if they want to wear them, or they don't have to wear them, whatever it may be, I don't want anybody getting sick or anything like that, but the fact is, you know, if it's not happening that way, what's another 10 more days? Because I believe our next COVID meeting that you had scheduled, Mr. Town Manager, is going to be two weeks from today, two weeks from today, and then, of course, then we have a town council meeting that night as well. And I, you know, I complained about this before, about town council taking action when we have a Board of Health here in the town, but yet again, after Counsel Jovan just brought up that they put that same agenda item on there, just an update, then, you know, assuming I'm in the right here, I'm making a motion to remove the masks within the town hall. Obviously, people can, obviously, people can make their choices and wear, get vaccinated and all that kind of stuff at this point.
Second. Okay, Counsel Lozo was up first, and then Counsel Jovan.
To the point that we're discussing is, the contradiction and the frustration that the parents are going to right now, when we went to that Board of Health meeting and we talked to the president of the hospital and it was, the mask mandate was being requested just for Southbridge, and the same people that control Hubbard and 20 other towns that go to Harrington, and we had the open discussion, it was, it was, well, I liked it, and they, the Board of Health, it seemed like the chairman was out of step with the rest of the Board of Health. Board of Health said, we don't want a mask mandate, we just want to educate the public on the use of masks. Left the meeting, and then all of a sudden, the chairman calls a meeting and then they vote on it when it was supposed to be a discussion, which is fine, but then when the parents, the frustration the parents have, all the families that go to, that are school choice out from Southbridge don't have to wear masks, and they all come and play with the Southbridge, all Southbridge Day boards, and, oh, I don't have to wear a mask, but you're in Southbridge, you know, you have to wear a mask, and it's, the frustration comes from the parents, and then they call me and they go, what about, I go, I'm the wrong guy to talk about masks. I said, I don't wear a mask, I don't ever want to wear a mask, and that's my choice. I'm not vaccinated, and I did not get COVID, so that's my choice, I don't have underlying issues. But then when they say follow the science, and they say the mask doesn't work unless it's an N95, so everybody's walking around with a blue mask, that doesn't work, and I'm listening, and I respect everybody's opinion. If somebody wants me to wear a mask, I'll put it on because they want me to wear a mask for them. But I sit there and I look at it, the more we got done with COVID, the more ridiculous we looked throughout COVID. It is a serious thing, but the thing is, the science was interpreted, the footage, six feet, where did it get, eight feet, what, what kind of mask, what are you going to do? It was amazing how ridiculous it got by the time we got to the finish line, we understand it more, we are going to have COVID probably like influenza, influenza killed more than COVID, but we don't want to say that. COVID was down because we are wearing masks, it's six of one, half dozen other, and the way I looked at it was, do what you want to do, but when they went with the school and they went extra on the school now, I'm like, I'm not, I'm like talking into the wind, but the frustration of the parents, they call me, I'm here to voice their frustration, how they have school choice kids to the charter school in Sturbridge, Shepherddale, and Tantascwa, and they don't have masks, but we have to wear masks. I said, okay, I'm bringing it forward, and let's see what we can do with it.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you through you. Don't disagree with the previous speaker, I, it is frustrating, I think, because overall there's been such big messages from a variety of sources. But you look today, State of the Union's tomorrow night, and they said, no more masks in the Capitol. Right? You don't have to wear masks for the State of the Union tomorrow night. Federal government changed their ideas. I respect the authority of the Board of Health, however, again, all these other districts are not wearing masks. Today, if you look through social media, all the school districts that were, Free the Mask Day, Free the Mask Day, kids not wearing masks. I guess my frustration is with our Board of Health, because throughout this whole pandemic, they've been following and not leading. I'm going to just call it like it is. We've had to push, we've had to direct, we've had, there is no reason that board can't meet more regularly than they do for these important issues. If every other district is taking their mask off, we're no different than any other district, if all these other districts said February 28th, we're taking our masks off, they all went on vacation in Massachusetts at the same time. This was their vacation, they're not concerned. You take a drive up, I drive South Street because I live right up in that neighborhood, there are no more lines at Harrington Hospital for testing. The other day, there was not even a single car in the parking lot during the testing. It is a serious illness that affects a certain population, and I don't wish anybody to get sick or tragically, I've had friends that have passed away because of this disease. So I'm not going to diminish the importance of it, but the matter of fact is, there's individual choices. If you feel that you need to wear a mask, then wear a mask. But we have to move to the next stage in this now endemic that we're going to have to live with every day. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any problem easing up on the mask mandate here in the town hall. I don't think it's going to make a difference on the school because that's up to the receiver.
It's up to him.
Whatever the receiver. As far as the Board of Health, I don't want to get too critical on the Board of Health, they are taking some guidance from the hospital, who has asked them to keep the mandate in place, so I think they're trying to do the best they can, but as far as getting rid of the mask mandate in the town hall, I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Just want to make it clear, the motion is, and I should have clarified it, or I have to amend it, would be for all municipality buildings except for the school system, because that is up to the receiver, just to clarify.
We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Is that a fact of the meeting?
Did Mike Hedy say yes?
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you. So what we do with all these meetings, they can choice, hybrid or in-house, do we lift all that too, everything, go back to normal? Something I was sleeping, I didn't catch?
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to Counsel Dow. So the Baker administration did say, I believe it's in July, that the remote access, remote meetings will stop, he expanded that from, he extended that from April to July, so that is a state law, they can do that, and I, I still recommend not the hybrid portion of here and there and trying to, with the acoustics and everything else like that, and then the town council, I would leave it all the same, I'd leave it the same, just because the state law has, has allowed the, the.
Extension.
The extension.
Thank you.
I'll leave it up to each chair.
Any further discussion on that item?
Well, we already voted, didn't we?
Yeah, but, you know. Okay, very good. Item number 30, amendments to the Southbridge bylaw clause, by adding section 3-110 adjudicatory hearing, absence by voting member, first reading February 7th, 2022, second reading today. 3-110 adjudicatory hearing, absence by voting members. 3-110.1 establishment, adoption of mask general law, chapter 39, section 23D, the Mullen Rule, town council voted to adopt mask general law, chapter 39, section 23D, the Mullen Rule at its regular town council meeting September 27, 2021. 3-110.2 applicability of the Mullen Rule, no member of the, of any multiple-member board, committee, or commission of the town shall be disqualified from voting on any matter due to said member's absence from not more than a single session of any public hearing at which testimony or other evidence is received, provided, however, that no individual shall invoke this exemption more than three times per calendar year. 3-110.3 procedure, upon missing a session of a public hearing, the voting member shall review all material and evidence presented and discussed during the missed session of the public hearing, included but not limited to an audio or video recording of the session. Upon review of the evidence, the member shall complete an affidavit of compliance on a form provided by the town manager's office, certifying under the pains and penalties of perjury the member's compliance with the bylaw. 3-110.4 records, the original affidavit shall be placed in the file for the subject of the public hearing and shall be kept as part of the official record of the proceeding. Copy shall be filed in the offices of the town manager and town clerk. The affidavit and any other supporting documents and recordings shall be maintained as required by the Secretary of State's Massachusetts Records Retention Schedule. 3-11.5 quorum, nothing in this bylaw shall change, replace, negate, or otherwise supersede applicable quorum requirements, and under no circumstances will the absence, absent member be counted toward a quorum. Item number 31, council's forum, Counselor Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing tonight.
Very good, Counsel Steves.
I don't have anything other.
Very good, Counsel Lozo.
Quick thing to the town manager, somebody brought up to me, because they hear about all the grants and they really think it's a positive thing for the town, it was brought to my attention by one of the directors of the softball association, if there was any recreational grant funding, try and help them replace their lights at the Henry Street Field. And I said, I'm not sure because of the structure of how the organization is set up with the town, and I know that they were in charge of their own field as far as maintenance of the field, maintenance of the lights, maintenance of the building, and then the town did a lot of work around the fields, but didn't do anything to the field, so I didn't know if there was a memorandum of understanding or a, an agreement between both, but I know the Southbridge Softball Association was a little different than all the other organizations, the way it was treated, but they're looking for some sort of grant funding or support to help them with the, with the lighting, because the lights are really antiquated and they're not LED and they're really, you know, popping out, hard to replace, but just food for thought if we could look at that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, Counsel Dow.
Thank you.
Very good, Counsel Jovan.
The only thing that I, I have this evening is, I still haven't received any information. I announced that we had a tenet of date to meet with the Commissioner of Education on March 9th. I will follow up with Senator Fatman's office to make sure that all the councils are aware of what time that will be. I'll follow up with his office tomorrow to make sure that it is still on and what date, what time it is, okay? That's all I have, thank you.
Very good. Chairman, Vice Chairman Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman.
I know. Boy, that was a flub. All right, so I just wanted to thank the town manager, or congratulate the town manager again on, earned his master's in that, in that field, and appreciate all the hard work you're doing here and being able to do a 4.0, that's pretty impressive. Lastly, next town council meeting, I'll be presenting the town manager evaluation and then what the, had a hot committee came up with and goals and objectives in the scoring system, and I'll present that to the town for a vote that day. That, oh, and that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counsel Dow, appreciate that. Item number 32, discussion of next meeting date, Monday, March 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM here in the dais, thank you.
Very good. Item number 33, vote to enter into executive session pursuant to mask general law, chapter 38, section 21, subsection A2, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager, and pursuant to mask general law, chapter 38, section 21, subsection 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property relative to the modification or construction of a fire station, which, if discussed in an open meeting, the chairman declares may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and I do so declare. So moved. We will return to open session only to adjourn. Mr. Manager.
Because we had an unanticipated item that could not be identified pursuant to the 48-hour rule, I would just ask that the council suspend the rules. I do have an item to bring to their attention, which falls under the 10 purposes for executive session, which is purpose number four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices and strategies with respect thereto, which discussed in an open session, would be detrimental to the security efforts of the town of Southbridge.
So moved.
Second.
Very good.
I think you have to wait till everybody comes back.
Wait till they come back.
Are you, there's four of us, we can do it.
Well, if there's five of us, we can vote.
Oh, five of us, there we go.
All right. Almost in favor of the motion? Motion to amend? Do we have the roll call on a, on a motion to amend as well?
Yes, suspend the rules and add that agenda.
Suspend the rules and add it in. Okay, roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Very good, okay, it's amended.
I would just, are we coming back in open session just to adjourn? Are we going to adjourn from the executive session? Because we could do that.
We're going to come to open session just to adjourn, that's what I, that's what I think we have.
You can adjourn from executive session, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
Those, the cameras don't have to be here, that's what I'm saying.
Correct, yeah.
You know, we're going to adjourn, so.
Yeah. Okay, roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Very good.